Meeting called to order. Today is Tuesday, October 16th. It is now 7:34 PM. Town council meeting in the town council chambers, 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island.
Councilman Lichardi?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Councilman Padula?
Here.
Council Vice President Dweeko?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
We have a quorum. Performance of the town solicitor. Councilman Padula?
It was discussed an executive session.
I motion to remove it.
Take no action.
Minutes of the previous meeting resolved that the minutes of the October 2nd, 2018, executive session and town council meeting are hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Move second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Consent agenda. License applications resolved that the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Move in second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Consent agenda correspondence resolved that the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred. Jake, did you want to say the names on those passports?
On the, oh, the licenses?
Yeah.
I can.
You want me to? Your honor? Or you want me to?
Well, the licenses were approved.
Well, anybody here for a license has been approved.
Okay. Consent agenda correspondence resolved that the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance number 2018-18, first reading, sponsored by Councilman Padula and Council President Goslin. An ordinance amending Appendix C Traffic ordinances of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of West Warwick. Amending, yeah.
Just the three, did you say the three streets?
Stop sign Harding Street, stop sign Waverly Street, and then no parking on Harris Avenue.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
Move in second. Any discussion? Again, Councilman Padula, I think Waverly and Harding are, is your award?
Yeah, we requested that because they're flying down Harding and shooting right onto Phoenix Avenue, the same thing with Waverly. Excuse me. So, I went to the Traffic Commission and they approved both signs, but there was a misunderstanding. We thought they were there before and we thought it could go up, but they need the three readings to actually put the signs up.
And Harris Avenue from Main Street, up past the library parking lot, has become a parking lot lately. And with the garage and people turning in from Main Street onto Harris Ave and people coming down, it's come very close to a few accidents there, so that was brought to our attention. And the Traffic Committee had took our suggestions and moved it forward. Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jake?
Yes.
Angelo?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Resolution approving bid award for consultant services for an update to the Town of West Warwick Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Move in second. Discussion? Any public discussion? Who put this on the agenda?
Isaac.
Mark, you just want to give us some public?
So approximately a year ago, the town applied for and received a grant from Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency funded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency to upgrade, update the town's hazard mitigation plan. Plan requires an update every five years, and in the event of a state or a federal disaster, towns are required to have an updated plan in order to qualify for a federal and state reimbursement. So, we applied for and received twenty seven, little over $27,000, put together bid specifications, went out to bid. We did put together a review committee comprised of Chief Ferrone, myself, and Sean Henry, who's the town's hazard mitigation officer. We reviewed the bids and we are recommending the bid award to VHB at a price of $27,122. It's actually nine dollars above the grant award, so we'll be contributing nine dollars and fifty cents to the project in actual funding.
Any questions for Mark? Any public comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Quick question. Do we skip two correspondents?
No.
No.
Capital Improvement Program Fire Vehicle, resolved that the town council hereby approves the purchase of one new unmarked Ford Interceptor utility vehicle to augment the existing fleet. The purchase will be made through the Greater Boston Police Council Contract Pricing Agreement and will be funded from the fire prevention expenses. The total expenditure is $29,192.95.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Hello. This purchase was made necessary. We have a 2004 GMC Envoy that the frame had deteriorated. It was going to cost more to replace than the vehicle would be worth. We were able to get in on the police rate to get the new vehicle, so.
And this, this funding is coming from a fire prevention account?
It is.
Normally you spend on supplies such as the little hats that you give to children and supplies like that?
Yes.
And it's going towards a vehicle?
Yes. That, that will be used for fire prevention purposes.
Yep. Any questions for Chief Ferrone? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it.
Reports. Town managers report?
Yes, good evening. Two items to report tonight. We have been doing research on a town Facebook page, and at this point, again, there's various options, but, you know, it does appear that we can produce a town Facebook page, which I believe can be restricted just to informational purposes, and we're, we are pursuing that at the present time, so. Again, we've done a ton of research. We'll go into a little bit further about the site, and then we'll just develop some guidelines as to the type of information that can be posted. Ideally, when a department posts on the various websites that we have, you know, whether it be fire prevention, the police department, recycling, I believe there's a way that those can be posted right on to the, a main town website as well. So, we're pursuing that, and I will be reporting back the progress on instituting line.
Ernie, how about, is there an update on the East Avenue Bridge and the Providence Transit Line Bridge?
Not as of yet. I do have a new contact that I was given that I will try and see if we can get a response because we have indeed, we have sent the correspondence to the director's office. We have not gotten a response back, but I have another contact that I can call to see if I can get a response.
Any questions for Ernie? Thank you.
Oh, sorry. One more item. One more item is that we've, yesterday, we interviewed, a panel interviewed applicants for a police chief. The panel was made up of a town administrator, a police chief, myself, and the HR director. Based upon those reviews and responses, I'll be forwarding a number of those individuals where I will be conducting a second interview with them. Those, the candidates, I believe, are worthy of further consideration, and then at that point, at some point when those interviews are done, and, you know, the follow, the appropriate background checks are done, I will be forwarding, meeting with the council to discuss those at a further date. But as of now, the next step is interviews with myself, one-on-one interviews.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. Before you are the financials for the first quarter of the fiscal year 19, as you can see, financially, we are trending better than expected, and right now, 99% of my attention is going towards the audit, which is going well. They've got about 90% of what they need and probably going to get the other 10% of them this week. That's about all that's going on.
Any questions for Kristen? Thank you, Kristen.
Directors reports.
Council members, I believe that you probably received the memorandum in advance of the meeting with regard to the planning office report. I'm sure you all know what the duties and responsibilities of the planning department are, but I reiterate those in the memo. We work with many different departments, actually work with almost every department in the town on various issues and items. What I've provided for you here are recorded decisions that were done, that were approved by me and recorded in the land evidence records in the last quarter. We've got some administrative subdivisions, one on Bradford Court, one on North Pleasant, those related to the condominium development referred to as Orchard off of North Pleasant Street. And as part of that condominium development, there was a requirement that certain land be deeded over to abutters. That land has been deeded over. The next administrative subdivision was in the Office Park for some properties on La Croix Drive, and basically what that did was just reallocated land from one abutting lot to the other so that that lot could be sold to a developer for, I believe, a construction Other administrative subdivision on 1029 Main Street was related to the Family Dollar, which you see has already been constructed, but basically as part of that approval process, they merged all of the lots together. They deeded some lots over to some adjoining, some abutting neighbors who had encroachments, and they've agreed not to develop the rare portion of that property to leave that zone residential and has open space. I hope that you're all pleased with the development there. I think it's actually a benefit to the town. It's improved the value in the area, and it actually looks pretty good. Administrative subdivision on Bridle Avenue was just merging two lots. We have a new tenant over there. I forgot the name of the company. They did have an opening in the spring. Ponzi, I think, Kronzi, or something like that was the name of them. New company came into the town, bought the property on one Bridle Avenue. They had a smaller lot in the back. They decided to merge those lots together. The last subdivision is a project on Pulaski Street that has been around for a long time. It's a condominium development. They received their final approval for 20 condo units off of Pulaski Street across from the old mill near the bridge. That is recorded. I believe that project will be on hold temporarily until a developer decides to reactivate the project. Other projects we've been working on in the planning department in consultation in conjunction with other departments is Shippee Avenue Drainage. It's been a very, very busy project for any of you who, who are involved in that project, almost daily interaction with either the engineers, construction company, or the residents in the area. Also, put together the RFP for the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which you, as a council, just authorized tonight to award that grant to VHB. That work will be, will be beginning very soon. Sean Henry, the AMA Coordinator, is going to be taking the lead on that project. Factory Street Civic Center Playground, that's a project that the town wrote and received a grant for. We went out to bid. That bid has been awarded to?
Probuilt?
Probuilt out of Massachusetts. I've been in contact with that, that company. I think Councilman Messier might be giving an update on that later, so I.
Sure, you can, yeah.
All right. So, basically, there, there was a deadline on that installation of that for October 31st. I did apply for a grant extension to November, so we do have a grant extension received from DM till November. There was a death in the company, and the administrative assistant who was responsible for all the scheduling, ordering, and basically coordination for Probuilt passed away unexpectedly in her sleep, and the gentleman who owns the company is trying to get back up to speed. I did speak with him yesterday, I believe.
Yeah, when I was in the office, maybe two days ago.
Yeah, and I will be following up with him on Monday. He, he gave us a scheduled start date of approximately two weeks, and the construction time is between eight and nine days to complete that project. Assistance to other departments, I won't get into that unless you guys have any, you gentlemen have any questions. But basically, we provide general assistance to all departments in the town on various items and various issues. Councilperson interaction, I think that, that goes without saying, as well as constituent interaction. If you look at our budget expended to date, $23,719. We have about 76% of our budget remaining. So, on most of the line items in the budget, we're running at about where we should be. We have not expended any line item for consulting at $3,000 in our supplies and expenses. We've, we have so far expended $468 of the $5,000 in that account. If, if that continues, we expect to end the year. We're early in the year, but we expect to end the year with a surplus in our account as we did last year.
Any questions for Mark?
No.
Thank you.
Good evening. The Human Resource Department continues to service both the internal and external customers of the town. On average, we receive approximately a dozen phone calls a day and countless employees who come in to make changes to their insurance, they require help with medical bills, seek approval of medical services, discuss union issues, and a variety of other scenarios. Human Resources processes monthly medical, dental, and stop loss bills. Medical and stop loss bills for the school department are also processed through our Human Resource Department. Weekly administrative accrual records are maintained, and quarterly department accruals are reviewed for accuracy. Human Resources posts all our jobs, receives and processes all applications. We handle all pre-employment communication and create all conditional job, job offers. We proctor all entry and promotional testing, which is a part of interviews for all departments, and handles all new employee paperwork with regards to health and dental benefits, as well as retirement enrollment paperwork. A few of the things that we're currently working on that we can speak about is a police recruitment process that we've been into. This is our second one in this year. We did one in February, and now we're doing one again at this time. We had 55 applicants. We've been processing them. We did the agility test and the written test, which was both held on Saturday, September 29th. Thirty-seven candidates interviewed by a panel which I sat on on October 9th and 11th. For two days, we interviewed them, and as a result, the top 18 candidates were sent as a recommendation to the chief of police for further interviews and selection. The chief did hold those interviews today. The Rhode Island Police Academy will begin in January of 2019. As a side note, we do charge a $25 processing fee, and so we received $1,375, which helps defer some of the costs of the recruitment process. Currently, there are five openings in the police department and a few more to come. We are also holding at the same time a firefighter recruitment. This is the first time we've done two recruitments at the same time, so we've had people in and out of this building on a daily basis. We had 18 applicants. They were received and processed for the West Warwick Fire Department. After a written test and a swim test, we now have 16 candidates that will go through oral board interviews sometime in mid-November, giving us a chance to process the police first. At a cost of $25 per person for processing, we received $450, which again helps defer some of the costs that are associated with processing. Currently, we have one opening to be filled at the firefighter department. Police dispatchers have also been tested in the past week. We had 10 applicants, but we processed only seven that applied to take the test that was held last Thursday evening. Five candidates are moving forward to interviews, and currently, we have one full-time position and two part-time positions available. What was not on my list is that I am also in the process of looking for an Assistant Superintendent of Wastewater. We've had several resignations and retirements, and we go through the process of completing their paperwork, notifying payroll, as well as then, for the most part, we receive a new hire that comes in their place. And so, we fill those positions as we go with new hire orientations. There are many employee issues that Human Resources continues to work on. Family medical leave, leave of absences, work-related injuries, fitness for duty cases, and disciplinary actions. Human resources involved in, human resource involvement is key in each of these types of cases to resolve. On average, a case can take anywhere between five and 25 working hours to resolve, depending on the severity and the length of the case. In some instances, independent medical evaluations are prepared and outside resources are engaged to determine the town's next step in bringing the case to fruition. Due to HIPAA regulations, I cannot disclose the exact nature of each of these types of cases, but I can disclose that I am currently working to resolve six active cases. Facility liability claims. The trust is our insurer, and I handle the liability for all of the buildings here in the town. We have had a few lightning strikes, and I am working on reporting and seeking reimbursement from the trust. There will be little, limited financial impact to the town. There are requests from the auditors, which I am working on. Hopefully, within this week, I can give them all of the information that they are requiring at this time. We have a few cases from the Human Rights Commission that we are working on, and I am working with an attorney to resolve some of the statements and questions that go around with Human Right Commission claims. On November 14th, we'll be having a flu shot clinic that we'll be announcing. Blue Cross Doctors Online is a new program that we'll announce to our employees shortly. And at the end of the year, we will have our Blue Cross and Health Savings Account orientation. We invite all of our employees to come, so perhaps they will start with an open enrollment in January of 2019 with that plan. We remain extremely busy in this department with constant involvement with the police department, the fire department, Public Works, Wastewater, and Civic Center.
Any questions for Karen? Thank you, Karen.
Thank you very much.
Tax collector?
Hold on, I'm sorry, Alan, you had a question for us?
Alan Palazzo, Fire Robin Lane, West Warwick, and I'm assuming that this question is germane to Human Resources Director regarding town employees, vendors, and contractors. When payments are issued to them, town employees without a doubt are issued W-2s. With regard to contractors and vendors, at the end of the year for all payments, what is the correct form for verification? Finance vice Human Resources? I thought she was going to have the input, so.
Ten ninety-nine.
Ten ninety-nines. Okay, and there is a big difference. People who issue ten ninety-nines are not town employees. Contractors. Thank you very much.
Good evening. The collection rate for fiscal year 2019 as of September 30th is 36%, and that includes real estate, tangible, and motor vehicle. We are now processing second quarter collections. After the first quarter collections, we completely process, we completely processed them, and we mailed out our delinquent notices, and I emailed the departments as well as the town council a delinquent list, and I, I think everyone did get that. And we are working together with all the departments to make sure taxes are paid before any business license, liquor license, permit, zoning applications, and CDBG grants are approved. The tax collectors department has implemented some new and efficient ways to process and collect our taxes. We have an automatic withdrawal plan that we implemented in July of 2016, and as you can see, we started with 43 accounts, and we're up to 233 accounts, and the amount processed was $204,902 as of our July 1st quarter collection, because we, we collect those quarterly. The number of accounts keep growing, so every quarter, people are applying to actually have their taxes automat, automatically withdrawn from their checking accounts. Another process we do is electronic wiring. Taxes are paid by mortgages and banks, and our first quarter deposits for July 2016 was That was a total of 4,655 accounts. The ACH program and the electronic wiring program eliminates processing hundreds of checks manually, and both of these programs were implemented in 2016. We also have EZ deposit, which deposits are reconciled and the batch checks are scanned daily, so the deposit is processed in the town's bank account by 8 o'clock that night. And the EZ deposit helps save time, not by having to make the deposit at the bank, and the checks are filed in the deposit batches in our office. So, they never go to the bank anymore. The checks that we collect and process in-house, they stay in-house. Probate collections. We've started working with the probate department in June of 2017, and June 2017 to present, we have collected $16,684.28, and that amount does include principal and interest. We also have a tax offset program. The town works with the state of Rhode Island, and we attach taxpayers' state refunds to their delinquent accounts. Since the program started in 2014 until this present time, we have collected $549,648.70. And as you can see, I broke it down each, each fiscal year, what we've collected, and as you can see, we've collected, every year it's gone up. We are at $6,353.43 as of 10/2/18 for this fiscal year. We will be mailing the notices for this program end of October. We have to give taxpayers 30 days to pay their delinquent taxes before we send the file to the state in December, and there is no cost. We don't have to, the state doesn't charge us to do this program, just so you know.
Are you talking about the, excuse me, are you talking about the list that you sent to us?
It's.
Which would have, it was?
Yeah, it would be some.
Eight hundred and sixty-something pages.
The delinquent list?
Yeah.
It, it, it does. That file gets sent to the state, who was a delinquent at the time, but it doesn't include But we, it does go to the state, and we can attach their state refunds, and that, the collections are right here. You can see what we've collected just from that. So, it, the program is, is successful. I mean, we're getting the delinquent taxes in. Tax sale collections. We brought in revenue for the town, and you can see in '16, '17, and '18, after fees and expenses were paid, those were the amounts that stayed with us. It's basically its revenue. The 2019 tax sale will be held on May 9, 2019 this year. I also broke down Rossi Law Delinquent Monthly Collections. That's our debt collection service, and I just wanted you to see, each month is different. They, depending on what they collect, what we collect is different, depending on what goes to court. Sometimes, you know, they get people at court, and then they, we finally start seeing the money coming in. But our fiscal year 2019 collection so far is at $9,832.30. We also have bank quarterly deposits, so the taxpayers can pay their tax bills at the, the local banks, and there are three local banks in town, Sentinel Bank, Citizens Bank, and Ocean State. We have implemented motor vehicle receivables to be listed on the MLCs according to Rhode Island Tax Law 44-7-11. This never, this has never been done before, and I found out through other tax collectors that, that is a law, so we can actually put the delinquent motor vehicle tax right on your MLC. So, if someone is requesting an MLC and they have delinquent motor vehicle taxes and, and it's their name, we can collect those taxes at the time of their closing. So, that, that's, that's a state law. And we just had a tax sale assignment. This was 1556 Main Street was redeemed on 9/28/18. We were able to collect the delinquent and current year taxes in the full amount, which was $15,925.57, which included delinquent taxes from 2010, and we actually collected through 2018, so we got everything. So, that's, that's, that was a biggie. That was good. So, we were proud. We were happy. So, the program, the programs that we've. So the programs that we've been implemented have made a huge difference in the tax department. We are more efficient and we have cut our overtime in the tax department like in half. We're always trying to find ways to make our office more smoothly, efficiently and in a timely manner. So that's all I have for today.
Any questions for Rose?
Thanks, Rose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question. I have two quick questions.
Sure.
Just state your name and address.
Richard, over Pike Street. Is there a cost to electronic withdrawal, electronic wiring to the town?
Oh.
It's like a credit card processing fee or anything like that?
Credit card processing fee, there is a cost, that's different.
But not to electronic withdrawal and the wiring?
Not electronic.
That's good, that's good. And you said the debt collection services, does that go to debt collection before or after the offset program?
Actually, it'll go in January, so the tax offset program will stop, will get those out.
December, right?
Yeah, and then January, I will send a file to Rossi and they'll.
So Rossi's, gets the debt collection services, gets it after the offset?
After the state. And then if we collect from the state, Rossi doesn't charge us, they eliminate that account, they won't.
Okay. So you have a chance of getting the full amount from the offset versus just a partial amount from the debt collection?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Building, minimum housing?
Good evening. I have reviewed our fiscal performance for the first quarter and we are at seventy-eight point nine-nine remaining. Residential property maintenance, we have currently spent one thousand two-hundred-and-seventy dollars for grass cutting and boarding up residents where needed. We have received a total of one hundred and seventy-five dollars for payments towards liens on properties and payments for any judgments that are assessed against properties that are collected through municipal court and a deposit into a revolving account for the building department. Total revenue for July through September was one hundred and thirty-one thousand three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars and eight cents. There's a typo, that is, same time last quarter was ninety-one four sixty-four, which is this quarter, this period was thirty percent increase. Fee, open space fee collected was fifteen thousand dollars. There is a twenty-five-hundred-dollar fee for each condominium unit that is built and for every new home that are being built in a new subdivision. Ongoing projects. Madison Ridge Condominiums, 171 through 175 Green Bush. Three permits have been issued for one triplex and one duplex. So we have a total of one hundred and nineteen condominiums. Orchard Farm Condominiums, sixty-nine North Pleasant.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
Was it originally eighty-nine? Is it possible?
I'm sorry, which one, what was the question?
This one, nineteen condominiums, was that the number that zoning originally approved? Do you know?
The councilman, they originally applied for one hundred and twenty-three, and they were reduced down to one hundred and nineteen by D E M. So one hundred and nineteen is the final number.
I thought it was eighty-nine for some reason. All right.
Okay. Orchard Farm Condominiums, sixty-nine North Pleasant Street. Five permits have been issued, duplex-style condos. One condo has a certificate of occupancy. There will be a total of twenty-three condominiums. West Glen Courages, West Glen Lane. All permits have been applied for, waiting for the last duplex to be issued. Three units have received COs, total of eight condominiums. Villanova, 550 Wakefield Street. There will be a total of seventeen condominiums built. The permit for the first duplex to be built was applied for on October 20th of 2018. Quaker Lane Condos, 101 Quaker Lane. All permits have been applied for and issued. There will be a total of twelve condominiums. There are currently permits issued and applied to build eight single-family houses. There were four single homes that received certificate of occupancy. Currently, there is a full-time minimum housing inspector. I'm the building and zoning official. I have an administrative clerk, there are part-time clerks, is currently covering in the tax collectors' office. There are part-time plumbing, mechanical and electrical inspectors. My minimum housing inspector is responsible for any complaints that are received and attend municipal court. I'm responsible for plan reviews, approving permits, inspections, attend pre-construction meetings, inspections, meeting with fire department, and also assist with the minimum housing inspector. Also on call twenty-four hours a day for emergencies. My plumbing and mechanical and electrical inspectors also are responsible for approving permits and doing inspections. My administrative clerk is responsible for verifying the permit applications are filled out correctly, verifies if taxes are paid up to date. If not, a permit application will not be issued. Also responsible for typing any correspondence, helps with any zoning questions, responsible for scheduling inspections for all inspectors, deposits, I'm sorry, deposits and payroll. Assists customers with questions and direct proper persons. Clerk helps administrative clerk. Inspections and permits. In July, building department gave out fifty-six permits, had sixty-two inspections. August, sixty-eight permits with sixty-three inspections. September, sixty-nine permits with sixty inspections. My electrical inspector had thirty permits with ninety-four inspections in July. August, eight permits with eighty-one inspections. September, forty-three permits with seventy-three inspection. Plumbing, mechanical, had forty-five permits with one hundred and thirty-one inspections in July. Had fifty-five permits with eighty inspections in August. Had thirty-nine permits with sixty-seven inspections in September. So that's a total of one hundred and thirty-one permits, two hundred and seventy-seven inspections in July. In August, one hundred and thirty-one permits, two hundred and twenty-four inspections in August and September, one hundred and fifty-one permits with two hundred inspections. My minimum housing inspector stays quite busy. I have a chart, a graph, I don't know if you guys received it, sorry, if you ever received the chart. Last, let's see. In June, almost fifty percent of his complaints were grass and weeds. Seventeen percent was sanitation, then minor temporary storage, sidewalk repairs, painting fences. September, he had thirty-six percent grass and weeds, seventeen percent sanitation, dumps the complaints, eight percent rodent hoppage. So.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
As you go through the months?
Yes.
Where you say you received, just say in June for example, thirty-three on grass and weeds, and then in July, thirty, on grass and weeds. Could they be the same complaint from the same, for the same residence?
It could be. I don't, I mean.
So you're not necessarily dealing with a new complaint on new residents all the time?
Not all the time.
Thanks.
You're welcome. That concludes my report.
Any questions?
I have one more question.
Certainly.
One more question.
Sure.
For the finance and the budget?
Mm-hmm.
For the open space fee collected?
Yes.
Twenty-five-hundred-dollar fee for each condo unit that is built?
Correct.
Where does that, and this might be a more Christian question, but.
Seventeen twenty-one.
That goes into seventeen twenty-one?
I'm sorry, yes.
Open space fees, which is seventeen twenty, it's called a couple of different things. Open space, anybody who builds is required to pay that fee. It goes to seventeen twenty-one and it's supposed to be allocated to Proxim.
Is that allocated for that specific area, or is that just goes into a pot?
Pot.
And if we have something we want to, we'd like to use it for, we bring it up?
Correct. Get approval from the council.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Rebecca, just state your name and address.
Yes, Council President. Rebecca Chopri, 61 Alden Drive, West Warwick, Rhode Island, with councilman. I have a question. What is going on with the Providence Street School? The middle school? My father helped save that over fifteen years ago. It is just sitting there. I have a question. What is going on with it? Why is it just sitting there, doing nothing?
Mark.
Does anyone know on the council?
Yeah. Yeah. Mark?
I didn't know if any of the newer people knew, I was just curious, because it's just sitting there. It could be used for business in that town, so.
Yeah, I've got something going.
Really? Because I heard it.
Go ahead.
I, I'm sorry, am I interrupting you?
No, I'm getting up to answer your question, but you may carry on, please.
I'm just wondering what's going on with the Providence Street School, because my.
So the Providence Street School is privately owned and the owners are marketing the school for development.
They're marketing it for development?
Yes, they are.
What kind of development?
Well, there have been discussions back and forth between the town and a potential developer. I'm not at liberty to divulge that at this point, but it would be a commercial development.
Commercial development? How come my late father was never notified of that?
The town doesn't notify individual residents.
He was told he would be notified.
With regard to proposed or potential developments. If there's a notification requirement as part of a development project, people within a certain area receive notice.
Okay.
I mean.
Okay, I feel like there's friction here.
I think what Rebecca's trying to say is that was a historical.
It was an historical thing and that's why it's a story behind this later.
So I didn't know what the deal was on that, that was quite a few years back, because they put it on historic or something. They had something, they saved, I think.
My father got over five hundred signatures to save that school.
Yeah, so it's a historical structure. And I believe that there was, there's been a sign on it, you know, historical stacks, credits or something like that.
I was told it was flooded, it's on.
There are probably issues related to the building that, you know, I'm not intimately familiar with. There is an owner of the property, the property is being marketed. With regard to any agreement with any family member of yours as to being directly notified about anything, I'm unaware of. It would be highly unusual for the town to be doing something like that, but if that exists, that's funny.
I know it sounds silly, it's just someone on the previous council back in 2004 or 2003 said he, I, we would be notified and his name would be put on it, because he did a lot of effort and work for half a year to get signatures from.
I'm not doubting the work that your dad did to preserve, to save the building, I'm just not aware of any arrangement with the town.
He'll be coming up though in a later conversation. Thank you.
Public Works, Highways, Solid Waste, Recreation and Civic Center?
Good evening. The Public Works Department is responsible for a variety of services we provide to the community. Some of them include roadside brush cutting, asphalt work, yard waste pickup, bulk pickup, drainage issues and whatever else comes down the line that's asked of us to do. Currently, our overall budget is on track for the quarter. Staffing, we're short two people right now. Vacancies, they've been advertised. And some of the work, we're continuing to work on now is, one is the Shippey Street Drainage Project. I'm happy to report it's on track after a couple of changes we had to make out in the field. It's going well. I'm out on the site every day. We have meetings, update meetings on every Wednesday, so that job's moving along. I don't expect any other delays right now. We did just about every change we needed to do. Another project we worked on was the Manchester Pulaski Street Temporary Island that's been installed. I can tell you that my department has received all positive feedback. I'm continuing to work on the councilman on a couple of other things we may be able to do with that intersection to make it a little more safe than it is right now. Knight Street, we had a flood there a couple of weeks ago. It caused a lot of flooding in the properties down on the lower end of the street. When we got there and we examined a couple of things that we could do to help relieve that, we discovered that we did have some drainage going into the culvert downstream from where it came out and went over the road. We dug that all out, we paved brand-new scuppers in three different locations, so now we have three twelve-inch pipes that will take not all of the water, but we hope it's going to help a lot and alleviate the flooding that we saw downstream from that on that particular night. And we're working on some changes in policies and procedures down in the Department of Public Works. I'm happy to report I'm getting good cooperation from the staff down there on that. Some of the complaints I was getting from not only the council, the public was the closing of the city yard during breaks and lunch period. I can tell you now that we've rearranged our schedules with the cooperation of my department, and that remains open all day long now from seven to two-thirty. Move on to Proxim Rec unless I have any questions on Public Works.
Any questions?
Proxim Rec Department, same thing, the budget. I anticipate it coming into line around the halfway period. As you know, sports are coming to an end pretty soon. I expect the overtime in that department, that's something I'm taking a hard look at. Will come into line by my next report. Some of the projects we've been working on, one is we planted a new tree up at the gazebo. I guess we're not going to do the large Christmas tree that everyone's accustomed to every year. They planted a very beautiful, smaller tree that I guess they plan on decorating this year for Christmas. And I've been getting some complaints on the lights in the ball fields. We are working on them. What we're going to do is try and replace some of the bulbs and capacitors that we can. They're in need of more works and more extensive wiring that we're going to have to look at by next spring. Tennis courts, we had someone there today working on the lights, so those should be in good shapes as we talk, as we speak right now. I have Nicole with me tonight to come out and talk about recycling and the garbage pickup, and I also have Laurie for the Civic Center and ice rink.
Dave, for Proxim Rec, where do we stand on the bike path?
The bike path. As I said, we're going to be ending everything pretty soon with all our leagues, I think within the next month or so, and I intend on taking that staff and diverting them onto working on the bike path. Now, I have been in touch with West Warwick, Rhode Island Neighborhood Watch. I just talked to the gentleman today. They have a volunteer group that wants to come in, and he mentioned one other volunteer group too. They'd like to come in on a Saturday and do some work. I can tell you right now, the end where you come, where you're going into Coventry seems to be the most overgrown, so I wanted them to get down and start on that. And I told them that I would put a crew together to work with them, bring our chipper in that way there. They want a cup brush, leave it on the side. I said, "I'll put a crew together with you so we can clean it up as we go," and that's what I plan on doing. Looking into a flail cutter, into renting one. They're pretty expensive. I'm going to try and work a deal if I can get the price down on those a little bit where I can put one employee out there with a small crew following, doing the cleanup, and I think we can get a lot of it done with that. I do have some money in the budget for that rental.
Is this something where next year, we can kind of get ahead of it? Do you have a plan in place?
Yeah, I think if we can get this machine and keep it long enough to go out there and do a substantial part of it, get it cut back really well, it's going to be a lot easier to maintain with the tools that we have. So that's my plan to try and do that. It appears to have been neglected for quite a long time, so.
Yes.
It's not to the point anymore where you can just go out with mowers and weed whackers and take care of it.
No, it's much, yeah.
We have to bring in something like a flail cutter and get it done. So that's our plan. Let's hope for a mild winter and we can work on that all winter long.
I'll take that. Thank you.
Nicole?
Good evening, gentlemen. Nicole Knott, Solid Waste and Recycling Coordinator. For the current fiscal year, West Warwick has tipped two thousand five hundred seventy-nine refuse tons, or twenty-nine point six percent of its eight thousand seven hundred and nine ton cap, and has delivered six hundred and twenty-six tons of recyclables to the materials recycling facility for a rate of nineteen point five percent. We've seen a decrease in our recycling rate, however, some of this is due to the increase in solid waste. Looking in our past, West Warwick always seems to be a roller coaster as far as solid waste and recycling rates. Right now, we are trending a four-point-six increase over our cap. We have had one recycling load rejection on eight twenty-four. The load was rejected due to excessive non-recyclables, plastic film and bagged items. A rounded load, weigh of two-point-three tons, was charged at forty-seven dollars per ton with a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar equipment fee for a total invoice of three hundred fifty-eight dollars and ten cents. Effective November first, Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation will be increasing enforcement of their recycling material contamination allowance and will be implementing a partial load rejection procedure. So loads may be subject to a fifty percent rejection rather than the entirety. So loads may be subject to a fifty percent rejection rather than the entirety of the load. However, the equipment rate will stay the same at two hundred fifty dollars.
Nicole, can I just ask, can you elaborate on that? So in other words, so there's plastic bags in the recycling bins?
Yes.
As if we need to start policing the bins? So they're trash bags or these like white bags from Stop and Shop or?
The Stop and Shop bags, and I, I took a tour with Nicole last year, in January, I believe.
It's the number one issue.
They get stuck in the, in the streams and they literally like, when you're there, you see so many bags floating around. So those, those are like the number one thing that's recycled.
It's really about education getting-
If people want to recycle them, they can, if they bring them to Stop and Shop, Walmart, any local grocery store.
It is such a problem with Rhode Island Resource Recovery, it's the number one issue. Education is the key. Um, when I am on the road, I do enforce it, I'll, I'll cover that a little bit coming forward. And, um, it's one of the reasons why they started a whole new program with the Recycle Right Campaign. But yes, that's, that's exactly, it's, it's, a lot of people feel that they can put their recyclables in a bag and then just tip the bag.
Right.
That's, doesn't get, it doesn't get empty, they need to be loose, so that's, that's the number one issue. Uh, speaking of education, Rhode Island is part of the Recycle Across America Campaign. I worked with Ken Townsend and have had the designated labels placed on all the recycling bins in our public schools as well as signage and recycling carts placed in all the cafeterias. Recycle Across America recycling signs have also been placed on the concession stands throughout the town. I've just placed another order for three large banners to be placed in the ice rink, the field house, and at the track. Um, and for three more stands, uh, signs for the concession stands at the other town fields and courts that are now going to be open for basketball and whatnot. These signs are free and part of the Rhode Island campaign. I submitted my research and findings on the textile clothing bins within the town to Mr. Zmelinski. Um, Attorney DeFiori is continuing the work on that with the related ordinances and letters to the vendors. I worked with Rhode Island Resource Recovery to get, uh, recycling cart hang tags created. These hang tags will be placed on the contaminated carts to warn, notify, and educate the owners of the issues within their recycling cart. It will also stop MEGA from tipping any contaminated carts that may lead to the contamination and reject a load.
Does this mean if you, if you see one on your journeys, then you just stick this on there and they won't pick it up?
That is, and I'm doing that now, but we had a special one made up which is more informational. I can give you an idea, I'm getting, this is just a black and white front and back. They will be full color, it will allow me to check off exactly what the issue is. And when MEGA disposal sees one of their tags, they will not tip the bin. So I cannot go up and down every bin, but these are ones that I see that are open, that I can clearly see some contaminants in, that I will tag. And if MEGA doesn't tip it, most likely I get the phone call, "Why am I not getting tipped?" We ask that they just handle the recycling issue, and once they do, I have the company go back and tip for those people.
Will they have to wait that, that two-week period?
No, no. When I ask MEGA disposal to go back to tip for me, he's really good at going back. The only, if it's an off week, Jay, um, Councilman Luchardi, if it's an off week where we're in a trash week and the recycling trucks with the arms are not in town, they must wait till Friday till the back loader recycling truck is in, but they would not have to wait the full two weeks. The Facebook site that I created and manage continually gets updated with current trash and/or recycling pickup information, recycling tips, and other pertinent information for the residents. I recorded a video aimed for the Fourth of July holiday and it received over five thousand three hundred views, still getting viewed. So that was exciting and because of such a, that great response, which I really was not expecting, I plan on doing another one in anticipation of Thanksgiving. And just making it relative to those items that you would use during a Thanksgiving dinner, just to keep it relative short and, uh, keep people on target with that.
I'd like to add to that, that was an excellent video. I, I watched it, um, there were things that I didn't know as a homeowner, because things, things change all the time. But, um, I think that should be, not to create more work, but, but maybe a quarterly thing. I mean, because the education is very important, and you did a great job with it.
Christmas, I'm sure you could probably have a whole-
Yeah, I, I wasn't expecting such the viewing I, I got, and I really liked the response. So I think I will make it a, a regular thing, even if I can theme it, I'm, I'm going to work on that, definitely.
Be great for the Facebook page, the information page.
Um, currently working on a grant to purchase a dumpster specifically for the disposal of mixed recyclables for our residents that do not have recycling services. So many people from over the five-plus units, um, some condo owners that would like the opportunity to recycle, this will give them, um, the means to do so. It will also serve as a location for residents that fill their own recycling bins. I'm one of them, I go over all the time, I always have an extra container for recycling. Rather than going in their trash can, they have the, would have the opportunity to put it in this dumpster. Uh, this grant is a, a match-to-match sponsored by the Rhode Island Resource Corporation. So up to five thousand dollars, they will match whatever the town would be willing to, um, participate in. I'm getting bids currently for the prices of, of dumpsters. Um, lastly, the recycling coordinator from the town of Coventry and I will be collaborating on a composting class for residents. We would like this to happen this fall, however, time is slipping away. If, uh, time does not permit this season, we will plan for an early spring event, for a composting event. Um, in closing, I'd like to move forward with some new projects. I will be getting, um, On the Road More to promote the recycling compliance, therefore increasing our recycling rate and percentage and deferring the trash from our cap. And I will also continue to address the curbside ordinance violations and send notice of violations uh, when necessary to initiate the municipal court proceedings. I will create and distribute the, uh, calendar year two thousand nineteen solid waste and recycling calendar that we have printed up for the residents. I will continue updating recycling tips and information on social media sites, creating an inclusive communication with the residents of the town. And I plan to schedule a recycling evaluation within the middle school and high schools and to work on a new program to decrease food waste slash wasted food. And that's it.
Any questions, Nicole?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. The overall budget for the Civic Center as of September thirtieth has spent twenty-one point thirty-eight percent of the overall budget. The overtime budget line item has spent fifty-seven point forty percent, forty-six percent of their line budget. The facility did have two major needs issues. Um, we did have a lightning strike that, that, um, hit the fire panel that controls both buildings. That will go through the trust and hopefully we can regain some of that money. And an oil line failed on unit three and four of the compressor of the ice rink. So with that being said, as we sit right now, um, the major needs has spent eighty point ninety-three percent of the budget. Um, the facility for staffing has one full-time union worker that is currently out with no return date, but the position was temporarily filled as of September first. Other than that, the facility does have all their maintenance and all their concession stand employees in place because as we know that these are busy times for the two buildings. As of right now, the field house is ninety percent full of rentals from November to March. The current goal is to market the off-hours, which are weeknights, nine-thirty PM to eleven. And on my weekends, the only thing that we have currently right now in the field house is six AM to seven AM and after nine PM on the weekends, so the buildings will be very full. The ice rink is pretty much full, the only thing is Rhode Island It's a Scholastical League did change the way that they do the hockey games now, they no longer book them. It was the responsibility of the schools. So with our ice rink being West Warwick, Coventry, and East Greenwich's home games, we do have some spaces that were left out. We have reached out to Rhode Island It's a Scholastical to reach out to all the other schools that do not have ice rinks. And we're going to try and get some of those games into the, the ice rink up here. We do have three groups that have committed for summer hours and the goal again is to continue to market it. So during our summer, we have a completely full schedule. The Monday through Friday during the day, we have the public ice skating, the stick and puck, and, um, the public hockey. I mean, it's not bringing in a ton of money, but it's bringing in about a hundred dollars a week. And, you know, I mean, the kids are in school, it's just homeschool kids that are being able to use the facility, which is great, so. Um, the concession stand is up and running. We did put the Clover Mini POS system in place and it is tracking the sales and inventory. It was just put into place at the beginning of it opening, which was the beginning of October. So at the end of the month, we'll go through a full inventory and see exactly if it's working out good for us or not. The concession stand for the first time ever, according to the Department of Health, has a business license to act as a concession stand, so, I mean, that's a good thing that we have one of those now. Also, on August seventeenth, the facilities passed an inspection from the Department of Labor and Training, Division of Workplace Regulations and Safety Acquisition. It was an off-visit, somehow they ended up there, but we do have passing and we're good, so we have all those posters passed. The Zamboni has been rewrapped and designed and green development. If anyone gets a chance, come up and see it, it's a great, great design. The ice rink now has the town crest that sits in center ice. And along with that, we have five other companies that have showcased their organizations and whatnot. So the ice rink does look great, anyone that gets a chance to come up and see it, it's a, it's a new look for it, and it looks great. We do have eleven other additional sponsors that are throughout the facilities and they're showcasing it. They've bought various different packages and, you know, so it's moving along, it's filling up, it looks good. We do have some upcoming public events. On Saturday, October twenty-first, we have a kids expo. On Sunday, October twenty-seventh, is the Town Halloween Party that is hosted by Councilwoman Jason Luchardi. On November third, the Ptoxit Valley Wellness Day, it's a five K and it's to benefit Jake Kelly. The Kelly family has been in the town for a really long time and, um, they just had to purchase a new home and it's to help Jake be able to be in that home with them, so. Saturday, November seventeenth, and Sunday, November eighteenth, we have a huge holiday craft fair. It's great for all those people that like crafts, come out, see it. And the weekend of January eighteenth through the twenty-first is the Kennedy Memorial Invitational Tournament for anyone that would like to come to any of these events.
Any questions for Laura? Laura, I do have one question with the overtime. At fifty-seven percent, can you respond to this earlier?
The explanation of that is that a full-time union person was, um, is out and that position has to be filled by a full-time union person.
Did that just happen in September, as, as of September first, or is that as of July first?
September first, the, the job was filled. So the job is temporary filled right, temporarily filled as of right now because there's no return date.
So that's stopping the overtime now?
Stopping it, there's no overtime because that position is currently filled.
Thank you.
Town Clerk.
That'll be you.
I think, um, do I need to go around there? Can I go from here?
No, you can do it, I can.
Thank you. The Town Clerk's Office, um, we'll start with, uh, my office. Business licensing, which includes all retail and home businesses, permits, and events in July and August of this year. In addition to regular monthly renewals, there was mechanical amusements, licensing for the Labor Day festivities and the parade. And September license renewals included theatrical live dance band, constables, twenty-four-hour victualling, regular victualling, and tobacco licenses. Tobacco licensing, of which I believe we have about forty-six in the town, um, come up for renewal on December first. Work begins on these in August due to the fact that they need, um, building fire and sewer inspections, clearances from the tax collector and the state tax, Division of Taxation, police checks with all, that all state licenses are current, retail Department of Health mechanical, including jukeboxes, video games, TIP certified with proof of insurance. Land evidence, that's what everybody walks into and sees being recorded right in the beginning. In that quarter from seven-one to nine-thirty, one thousand six hundred and ninety-three documents were recorded. Dog licensing begins every year on May first and goes through April thirtieth. Don't know where that fiscal came in, but that's the state's fiscal for dog licenses this year. As of May first, we start dog licensing, by the way, in, uh, February, March. As of May first, there were nine hundred and thirty dog licenses. In the quarter, one hundred and thirteen were issued. Most are issued before the May first date that it begins, um. So, but we do license them throughout, new dogs, people who forgot, et cetera, people are waiting for neuterings. Elections, this is an election year, we have an election year every other year. On even year, um, this year, we had a primary that we started working on in June. We are now right into the November sixth election, which is all day, every day, and we could probably take a million overtime hours, but we just have everybody in the office working on it as much as possible, trying to waylay as much of the overtime as necessary as we get closer to the November sixth election. It is the first year we're using the poll pads. Anybody who went to vote, you saw the new way you vote with the poll pads, those have been an amazing success. Um, I was on the committee that got them into the state a few years back, we were one of the pilots. It was tremendous and it's been a great idea for the state as far as cutting down lines and waiting, et cetera. So that's going on as well, we're still working, it, it takes a couple of months after every election, so we're still wrapping the primary up as we go into the election. Probate is the probate court, we run the probate court, we have a judge, first and third Wednesdays of every month. I'm not sure exactly how many probate cases are ongoing, I can't tell you, we, we, in this period, had approximately a hundred and forty-three documents filed. We work directly with Rose in Tax and Pam in Building on claims against estates. This has been very successful to date with bringing, uh, money into the town. Municipal Court is the first and third Thursday of every month at five o'clock. We average during the summer fifty to seventy-five cases because we did not have the police to get out and do the, because they were doing all the detailed work on all the construction. Our average load is one-twenty to one-fifty. Vitals include marriages, deaths, and births. And reporting is done on a weekly, monthly, and annual basis, of course, during, uh, the May through October is a big time to get married and so it was very high, um, for that time. But now we're back, pretty much back to normal, whatever that is. Hunting and fishing licenses, sales are down in the Town Clerk's Office because the state is issuing them for cheaper than we are. So they're getting a lot of that. We still supply all of the books and catalogs and whatnot that you may need to be hunting and fishing. Yard sales, there were thirty-one yard sales approved between July first and September thirtieth. Public records requests, there were twelve in that quarter. Lawsuits and claims are ongoing, during that quarter, there were seven claims for lawsuits. Zoning Board of Review met once in September. The codification of all ordinances through April two thousand eighteen is done. That means that your code book, your ordinance book, your law book for the town of West Warwick is up to date to April on the website. We are on target with the budget in Town Clerk's Office, in elections, in probate, in zoning, and in the town council. And just three years ago, I started renovating the vaults. We put non-slip garage flooring paint, interestingly enough, it was still slippery. So I recently bought runner rugs, which I put in a grant for and will be covered through no taxpayer dollars. And I do believe that that is it.
Any questions for the court?
Richard, who, Forty-One Pike Street. For the fishing license, does the town keep that revenue when we issue one, or does it go to the state?
No.
Okay.
We do keep dog licensing.
I was just going to say, why don't we match the state?
They'll find a way to get that, too.
Pretty much when people call, pretty much.
So it makes it easier for us to keep our price higher than theirs?
It's, we don't make any prices in our office. That's not for us to make, um, it's just savings if they go through the state.
Thank you.
Additions and cancellations of taxes resolved at the attached additions in the amount of twenty-two thousand seventeen dollars and forty-eight cents and cancellations in the amount of seventeen thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents presented to the tax assessor for approval of the town council in accordance with Article twenty-five, Section five of the West Warwick Code of Ordinances, is hereby approved. The original list is on file in the office of the tax assessor.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Move in second, discussion?
Move in second, discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Appointments, reappointments. Resolved that the town council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member of the Westwark zoning board of review for the town of Westwark for the term to expire seven, twenty, twenty.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Move in second.
And I'll move the name of Justin Kutu.
Second.
Move in second, Justin served on the board already. He's been there, uh, he's been in almost two years. So, uh, fully agree with you a hundred percent.
Makes sense.
As David said, uh, it was maybe the month before last. Um, we had two good candidates come before us. We could only pick one at that time. Um, Justin is certainly qualified for this position.
Any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Justin.
Congratulations.
Do I, you wanna read these both at the same time or do them separately, Dave? There's three applications.
Separately.
Separately. Appointment for an alternate member of the Westwark zoning board of review resolved that the town council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as an alternate member of the Westwark zoning board of review for the town of Westwark with a term to expire seven, twenty, twenty.
Move the resolution.
Oops, sorry.
Second.
Move in second.
I move the name of Derek Reed. Look at his application. Uh, as everyone knows, the planning and zoning boards, we always try to pick the most qualified because these are really crucial, um, boards that involve our future. And when you get someone that's in the business that knows, it makes it easier and we make, they make the right decisions. So, we all agreed that the best way to do this a few years back was to put the most qualified. So, I moved the name of Derek Reed.
I'll second. It only makes sense.
Move in second, discussion?
So, what do we have, three applicants?
Yep.
For two, one position or two?
Two.
Two.
Two positions.
We have Amy, uh, there's three. Jeffrey Hunt, who's in the construction business also. Amy Ortiz, who's in the law, uh, Law Officers of Devane and Fogarty under, um, our legal studies and, um, I think it's land evidence or something like that. So, you have three qualified candidates.
It says attached application, um, attached letter after Amy Ortiz's application. I don't have.
Might be the one right before this, Jay, because it looked like every, everybody was attached onto the full.
No, it's not. I actually texted Paula about this. I was looking for it during the meeting.
I don't, I don't know Amy Ortiz or Jeffrey Hunt.
I don't know either.
Is either one here?
I know Amy and I know, and I actually met with Jeffrey Hunt.
So, the only thing I, I have to go by is, is, um, the application in a letter. If we're gonna make a decision on, on either one or two of them tonight based on this, I'm gonna go with the, the construction technology, um, in all fairness because neither one of the two are here for that second position. Uh, maybe we can retrieve that. That's the attachment for Amy Ortiz.
Should we table it then, or?
No, I think we should table it.
Oh, was it, was it something you neglected to put in there, or there wasn't one?
I didn't hear that.
You have, you have two applications.
You have three applications.
Three applications, two of them are contractors. One is a, an attorney assistant or whatever that is, have no, uh, qualifications for building and zoning. So, I, I, you have two appointments. I brought the name of, um, Derek Reed. It was seconded, so we need a vote or?
Any other discussion on that? The only, the only concern I have, and it could be resolved real soon, is the lawsuit matter. And once I think that is settled, I think we can move forward. I, until that's settled, I, I, I just, I, I personally think we need to hold off.
What, what's the lawsuit have to do with all?
I disagree with you, I think if we're gonna go.
Again, it's, it has to do with land in West Warwick and it also has to do with, it also has to do with the zoning and planning. Nothing else, that's all massive.
If that would be the case, to an alternate member, then if something came up regarding that situation or, or him or family, then he'd have to recuse himself.
Yeah, and you still need five people with the alternate and you need four votes out of five. I, I, I think it's nothing to do with the lawsuit.
That's, that's my opinion.
Any other comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'll take a roll call vote, Jay?
For him to be on the, I, I say yes.
Derek. For Derek to be on, yes.
No.
I, I think we should wait. I think there's a conflict at this point, so I'm gonna say no.
And I say no. I gave my reasons to.
Appointment to the zoning board of review, alternate member to term to.
We're still on that, we're still on that topic, so if somebody else wants to.
I'll move the name of, um, let me see, I just lost it. Jeffrey Hunt.
I have a mo- motion to move Jeffrey Hunt. No second?
Second.
I'll take a roll call. I, I, again, guys, I'm being honest here. I, I think this should be held off until things are resolved.
Then you don't wanna put anybody on at all?
Do we need to put somebody? We have a full board right now, just minus two alternates, is that gonna be?
Well, that's the second best thing.
Is that, I'm asking, I'm being fair here, gentlemen, I mean, very fair. I'm just.
I wanna make sure I understand this.
I'll agree with you with that.
Let me make sure I understand this. So, in other words, we're not filling the, the full-time position.
Full-time position, yeah, with Justin Kutu.
I, excuse me, full-time, okay, so we're looking at the alternate positions. We, we've determined that one needs to wait. So, then we have to put someone in right now and why don't we?
I'm saying that.
So, so what happens if, all right, we have five members, one person is sick, they're out. So, we have four members, no alternates, and the vote is two to two. Is it a probability that's gonna happen? Most likely.
They wouldn't call me.
So, why waste, I don't know. I just think a lot of things here are, are time wasters and we can, we have a qualified applicant. He wants to serve, he's done a lot for the town, he has the knowledge. I.
But that one's not on the table, really.
Well, I'm sorry.
Sorry to have voted on.
I don't know these two other people. I don't know their qualifications. I don't know if they have a lawsuit against the town, so I don't know.
I just said, gentlemen, you can reach out to these individuals if you'd like. I, I also gave you my reasons why at this point in time. And I made it clear that this issue can be resolved. I don't know what more I can tell you. I'm gonna make a motion to table.
Second.
All in favor of table?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
What do I do with the vote, Dave? The vote stands?
Three, two.
And table the rest of it?
Table.
Table the second one, too?
Table both of them.
Do you have, do I need a motion for the second one? Okay, do I need a motion to table three?
Make a motion to table all three of them. No, number three.
Two.
Number three.
Number two. Yes.
Madam Clerk, we tabled number two.
Yes.
Now, we're making a motion to table number three.
Right. Go ahead, you need a motion?
So, let me ask this question. Moving, moving forward.
You don't, you don't have a second.
I don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion.
Okay. Somebody motion?
Take, take no action.
You can speak if somebody makes a motion.
Can I make a motion to speak?
Move the item. Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Councilwoman.
I just have a question. Moving forward, because this scenario may pop up at the next meeting. We have three applicants for, for two spots. What I think, my personal opinion, is the most qualified applicant is not being allowed to be on the board right now because of a situation, which I understand. Suppose that situation's not resolved, I would say next week, two weeks, a month, two months from now. We have these two other applicants coming forward, which, again, I don't know either one. I don't know their qualifications. I don't, on paper, I don't see them being as qualified as the first person. So, are we going to appoint two members on that are, I don't, again, my opinion, are not as qualified as the first person? So, we're gonna appoint two and three and not put one on because of a timely, because of a timeliness issue? It's gonna come up.
It, it, it could. I mean, it depends, I, October thirty-first is the next zoning board meeting, which is Halloween night. Um, I kinda find, I find it hard to believe that they're meeting that night, but, um, it, it all, I mean, I, I don't know if everybody's gonna attend or not attend. I can't say that if they will.
We're just gonna be, we're gonna be faced with the same issue down the road. We're just kinda, I feel we're just passing it along. And then we're gonna be put in a situation where we're gonna have to put two people on that I, I don't think is qualified as the first person.
Maybe some, somebody else could apply also. Um, and again, you don't have to put, listen, just 'cause somebody applies.
Well, you're not gonna re-advertise it, it's already been re-advertised.
You don't have, what I'm, what I'm saying here is you don't have to fill a position just to fill a position. If somebody, if, if you've got five applicants that are not qualified, why would you put the applicant on? So, exactly what I said is just because we have two other applicants, doesn't mean they may get it or may not get it. They may not be qualified, exactly what you said. So, we might put one on. Mr. Hunt has a lot of, uh, construction experience also. But at this time, due to the situation and due to the applicants, I think it's in all fairness to hesitate, to hold off.
Legally, do we have to hold off?
There is an obvious conflict of interest. There's, there's an obvious conflict of interest. If the, if the issue is resolved, that conflict may also be resolved.
But what if the person recuses himself if the matter comes up regarding this, that sit- that situation? If it doesn't involve that situation, I don't understand how it's a conflict.
I, without getting into the facts of the litigation, it's intertwined with that department. To have a plaintiff in a suit involved intimately with the department that is, it's in direct conflict with is not appropriate.
There's a lot of things that go on that are inappropriate.
The basis, the basis for the litigation has to do with that specific department. If that issue is resolved, then the conflict most likely will be resolved.
But where would a conflict be if he can't vote?
It's not, without getting into the details, 'cause I can't get into the details of it.
Right, I understand.
But there, it's involving the entire department. It's not just specific to one specific area.
Members of a board.
It's, it's members of the board in general. The, the allegations made in the original complaint are specific to that department. Therefore, if the conflict is resolved, then there will be no issue if it's resolved appropriately, which is what was discussed. So, you have to, there's an obvious conflict. Is.
It's not the appropriate time. But it could be.
All right, well.
Just gotta be patient.
Yeah.
I have a motion to table, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Claims, the town hereby denies or approves the following claim against the town.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Move in second, discussion? Who's, um, so we have the pothole and they were all recommended to pay?
Yes.
Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Authorization to mediate the matter known as JNS one-two-seven-two Main Street LLC versus Lehigh Realty et al., case number KC two thousand sixteen dash one-two-two-two previously tabled.
I'll make a motion to take it off the table.
I'll second.
Move to take it off the table, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to.
I'll move the resolution for discussion.
I'll say.
Move in second, discussion?
What was this all?
This was what we met in executive session, last meeting.
Oh, yeah, we had no.
No, I, I, that's what we had to, we voted.
Take no action on it, what are you gonna hold on?
No, we gotta, we gotta just say yes, authorize.
Oh, yeah.
Any other comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Contributions for nonprofit organizations resolved that the town council hereby makes the following contributions to the following nonprofit organizations for dispersment of funds.
Just need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Move in second. So, um, as we go into November, we always, uh, go through the Veterans Council and the Food Cup. Um, we allocate their money, but also on the agenda further down is allocation for other nonprofits. So, um, that's something that, uh, we need to talk about. The Food Cup, it gets into, uh, Thanksgiving, so that's why I put this on the agenda because our next meeting isn't till whoever's here, isn't until mid-November or third week of November. So, I, I wanted to catch up on this before it's too late for the holidays, for the Food Cup and while we're on there, the Veterans Council. But as you go down, now, last year, we gave fifteen hundred to the Veterans Council and I forgot the exact dollar amount.
Six thousand nine hundred to the Food Cup. I have the resolution for last year here.
And then, um, but the thing is, out of our budget, we, we did have a budgetary line item of a certain dollar amount, which is usually those two items. So, if you look down bottom, um, there is one for, what the heck is it?
It's Angels in Action.
Angels in Action and then it is, um.
One for Westwark Steelers.
Uh, Westwark Steelers. So, that's something we need to discuss if you want. And we could actually put all, four in this resolution. It's just a matter of what dollar amounts go to which, or if you want none at all, or whatever it may be.
I, I spoke with, I put the, the two, for Angel in Action and the Westwark Steelers on the agenda. And whether it was discussion or, or correspondence, it doesn't matter. Um, I see the work that Ainge, that Deb Raffo does for Angel in Action. Um, I respect that, she's, she's a, i- if, for most cases, a one-woman show. She leads the group, she does work for those people. It's really a one-time thing. Those people who are, who are just down and out, they don't meet those qualifications that other people meet. Again, I don't wanna get into the whole sensitivity and confidentiality, but, um, she works year-round and she works hard. And she's, her, it's in my ward. And when I spoke with Deb, um, she's constantly moving, she's constantly giving, whether it's helping with a wheelchair for somebody, a computer for somebody, um, food for someone to get them through the week, um, a hotel stay for someone who just lost their, their home. Um, and so we spoke and I said, you know, for a dollar amount, just put on five hundred and twenty, which would be ten dollars per week. And we left thirteen hundred dollars on the table last year. And that's something I believe, we have ten thousand dollars allocated for this type of, these types of organizations. And I don't think it can go to a better organization at this point.
And the only thing I, I, I did see Deb last night, I did forget to ask her, are you a five-oh?
Yes, she is. She's a five-oh-one, C-three. I already checked that.
And I'll echo your comments, uh, we, we actually, uh, council was invited. We did the fundraiser at, uh, to VFW last night to raise money for Angel in Action. I don't know how much you ended up making, Deb, but, uh, it was a fun.
He, he ended up giving me two hundred.
Two. That's great, that's great. We, uh, the council was there, a hundred percent of the tips went to Angel in Action and then a percentage of the drinks were also donated to Angel in Action. So, I'll echo Councilman Luchardi's statements about the great work that Angel in Action does.
All right, so that's five twenty. Now, do you wanna just go on to the Westwark Steelers?
Yeah, if I could. Um, I met with, uh, the Westwark Steelers. I don't have a car on the lease here. Um, I don't have a child who's cheerleader or a football player. Um, but they are the recreation group that is in my ward and they, they play down in Crompton, which they're not on a town field, um, because there is no town field big enough to play football. So, and the issue they're struggling with in comparison to other leagues, which I'm gonna compare maybe soccer and, and baseball, which, again, I don't know what the registration cost is, but I'm just gonna throw out a number. Say it's a hundred dollars, maybe a little more, a little less. With, with, with baseball, you're, you're gonna get your typical, your, you're gonna get your shirt or your jersey. Uh, you may get stirrups, uh, maybe a pair of pants. Um, the rest goes towards the league for obvious supplies and concessions. Um, with football, it's not like that. Uh, football, you, you need, obviously, it's a, it's a contact sport, so you need to, you need to fit the kids with the pads, which are very expensive. And you need to, you need to obviously put a helmet on them. And the helmet. And the helmets only last so long. And it's about two hundred bucks to, to fit a brand-new helmet. So, not saying you get brand-new helmets every year, but they have to be inspected. And when those helmets have something wrong with them, they get back, they come back to the football organization cracked, which for obvious reasons, you get the helmet back, and you're gonna wanna take the chance and put it on somebody. You can't do that. Um, so they only charge a hundred and twenty-five dollars to, to play football. Um, which, to cost, to outfit a child is a lot more than the one twenty-five. So it's always a negative. So right now, they're dipping into their concession funds to help pay the electric bills, which we pay for, I spoke with, um, Director Paccosi, that we end up taking the, the, we make the payments for at Riverpoint. So, I'm looking at this as, we help football by paying the electric bills out of this account, which is a nonprofit organization, five oh one C three, for the months they play, which would be August, um, September, and October. And the total bill came to one thousand twenty-nine oh five, which to round down and say roughly a thousand dollars. I'm not saying we do this every year, um, but I think they need the help right now. We have the money in the account. Again, we, we didn't use thirteen hundred dollars last year. We left it on the table. So, that's why I'm bringing this to them. I spoke with two board members already, uh, for the last couple of months or so.
I, I had the same discussion with Paulie on, um, Saturday night at the Elks with their fundraiser. And, uh, they were explaining to me the same exact thing, everything you just explained. And, um, for instance, West Walk Baseball, they're under town lights that are, uh, you know, funded, and they don't charge the league for those lights. So, and that's what the Steelers were kinda concerned with, is they don't have that luxury because of the town field. And I told them, like, and look at it, and as long as the council approves it, I, I don't see a problem with it. Um, again, we have, it's ten thousand in this line item, um, so it'd still leave us some in case others come forward. If we go with the same exact recommendations-
How much, how much are they looking for?
Three seventy thousand, right?
Well, the bill, the bills from last year, I asked them to supply last year's bills, came up to one thousand twenty-nine for the three months. Um, obviously, that can fluctuate. I would say, go by this number and round down to a thousand. So if their bills, say, come up to ten fifty, ten sixty, that's something that's fifty-sixty.
I know, I know what the Steelers do. I was a, I played for the Steelers when I was a kid, and my son played. And a lot of my family members, they do a lot, and they get nothing from the town. They take care of their own fields, like David said.
They don't get their fields lined. They don't, you know, so, I mean, I think this is a, a contribution to make them equivalent to the other leagues in town.
I don't have a problem with that.
So the Veterans Council last year got fifteen hundred. And Bob, I know you're here on behalf of the Veterans Council.
Pop Shires, two twenty-nine East Greenwich Avenue, past president of the Veterans Council. Again, we, if we could get the fifteen hundred, that'd be good. That allows us to do the Veterans Day and Memorial Day, and to maintain the park. Park is getting older, so the monuments over there need updating, and then we have the cannon over there. We also try to keep some of the flags in the town up, degraded. In the past, uh, the town council's been able to help us, and we're hoping going forward, we can get the same help. Thank you.
I think we should give them two.
Well, I, I just wanna check something because you're getting close to the end of the line here.
Right, and if somebody else-
What was the Food Cupboard?
Sixty-nine hundred.
So if you went sixty-nine hundred, you're over budget.
Well, my question on the, on the-
I'm just saying that you're over budget on-
Right. My, my question on the food pantry. Um, last year during this time, what, what we, what I, what I did with, with the Halloween event is, we, we split, we collected the canned goods, and we split them in thirds. And a third went to the food pantry, a third went to Angel in Action, local group, a third went to help the homeless statewide organization. We also began to collect turkeys somehow, um, and churches were calling, um, my family to, to wanna donate turkeys. They wanted to donate canned goods. Um, we also, um, I'm in the Sons of, Sons of Italy with Councilman Padula, and the Sons of Italy gave, and all in all, I would say, from both organizations, there had to be about sixty to seventy families that we were going out to. Churches in Massachusetts were calling us, saying, are you the people collecting, uh, the food for the people that don't have it? And we would meet them at rest stops.
Just the Sons of Italy gave sixty. We gave them a penny.
Um, and I think a lot of organizations come out. And the Senior Center alone, Be the Change, Angel in Action, and the Food Pantry, there's a lot of help that people get. Some people may be getting the same help from everyone. Um, I don't know. But I don't know where that number of sixty-nine hundred, what it, what it means. It's a tough, I can't really focus-
It was matching. It was matching, 'cause that's what-
It used to be five thousand, then we brought it to fifty-five, then it went to six.
I'm all forgiving, but I, I gotta-
During, during the-
Spread, spread the wealth.
Yes.
One of the things, and, and I regret, um, I was unable to get in touch with, um,
Sylvester.
Uh, Dan, Dan Sylvester, um, today. I was tied up on a funeral, but, um, I've tried to get him here so he can explain that. Um, but again, if you want, I mean, he's, he's at sixty-nine hundred. Uh, once, one of the times that I know you weren't privy to it, but he came here before the council, explained to us that, you know, people that have never, ever used the food kitchen, um, families that, you know, were getting laid off uh, during the, the, uh, job crisis here in Rhode Island, and the unemployment rate. He was getting individuals he'd never, ever seen before, and, um, you know, just needing help at that time. And I think that's why it went up to sixty-nine hundred.
We understand that, Bob.
No, I, I'm, I'm saying, I'm just giving you what I-
They get help from other organizations also, and these guys get help from nobody.
Well, right now, I could tell you that I don't know what we spent out of that account yet, um, because I know-
Yeah, you gotta check.
But right now, if you do fifteen hundred to the Veterans Council, fifteen, twenty between the Steelers and Angels in Action, and sixty-nine hundred, you're ninety-nine, twenty. But if you wanna move it around, it's up to the council. That's, the council gets to make that choice.
I mean, I think doing it that way, everybody-
Mary, if you wanna come to the area, something to do.
I say give more to the veterans.
I don't disagree.
And, and I think with the food bank-
It used to be two thousand to the veterans. We cut that back.
The number I, I would feel comfortable with is, is fifty-two hundred, which would equi, be equivalent to a hundred a week.
What do you mean fifty-two hundred?
Fifty-two hundred to the food, I'm sorry, to the food pantry.
Mrs. Young?
Mary Young, fifty-eight Pond Street. I can't say a negative word about any of the organizations you're discussing. Um, it's, is it, I, I, is this first come, first served?
It, it isn't. It's available for, it, it's one thing that we don't advertise it, per se. But we do recommend, and in, in the past, we've had, um, substance abuse. We've had other individuals who've come in and applied for this money.
And there's an app-
We don't have to spend it all now. It's just, I, I was focused on, um, and it just happened to be those two other organizations at the same time have put a request in. I was more concerned with, um, the Veterans Council, and, uh, with, with the holidays coming up and Thanksgiving, so they were able to, um, maintain their-
Is there a certain time of year you usually, is it around now that you usually do it?
This, this is, every year, it's usually in October, November, first meeting in November. But this is an election year, so there's no meeting in November. So, like I said, it'll be a third week, and they need, the Food Cupboard will need the money more for the holidays. And then you also have, uh-
Can I, what I'd like to see in, in the future, the, the two that I'm concerned about, the two that, that gave a letter in requesting money. Um, what I'd like to see in the future, possibly a, a designated time period, where it might be like, just say, uh, September, October, November, and then maybe three months in the, in the spring, where people could send a formal application in requesting donate, requesting use of this money.
What we used to do, and David will remember, we never gave large amounts. Anybody who applied for that grant, whatever you wanna call it, um, we never refused them. We just split the wealth. Um, I think the Food Cupboard was getting maybe four thousand then, and there were seven or eight other, uh, mental illness. There was, uh, the halfway house. There was, I don't remember them all. But there was a good eight or nine of them at one time.
Should we, should we then potentially, I mean, I, I agree with the two thousand for the veterans.
That's what I'm saying, we should leave some.
No, I understand. So should we leave some, should we leave some in there for some other organizations that are maybe watching this meeting tonight?
I, to answer your question, I, I would say yes. Right now, it seems like it's a first come, first served.
And it seems kinda hit or miss. I mean, if there's an application, yes?
No.
Or you just submit a letter to the town to please give us some money?
But there should be a formal application.
Yeah. And a, and a period of time when, you know, a, a due date for the application?
So other groups are, have the same opportunity to apply?
I agree.
'Cause I'll send a letter tomorrow for my favorite organization.
I knew you again, that, Mary.
I doubt you'll wait till tomorrow.
Her, I seen the dollar signs in her eyeballs.
She's going the hallway to start writing it now.
Good for you, Mary.
So should we, should we leave some open for that, or?
I would leave some open.
So, so the question is-
So two thousand for the veterans. I mean, I agree with Jason on that.
What I, what I think, I'm, I'm ju, I'm going by what's the letters that were sent in, and the approval for the, that's on the, um-
And again, if you gotta move the Food Cupboard, you, you can move the Food, I'm just, if you're, I'm going by what you're just saying here.
I'm going by the letters that are front of it.
The veterans, um, so you wanna up it from fifteen hundred, and I, and again, the full council has to approve this. So you wanna move the veterans up to two thousand, a thousand for the Steelers, which is on there, and five hundred and twenty for Angels in Action. Right there is thirty-five twenty. Now, the Food Cupboard's the next discussion. Deb, come on.
Okay, um, Deb Raffo, uh, president of Angel in Action, all right. As far as the Food Cupboard goes, I, I know that you're, you know, it's needed in this town, but they get a lot of donations from other organizations. Joblot alone gives them truckloads of food. They get donations from, every corporation there is possible does donations for them and drops it off to them. I've been very familiar working with the homeless in the town and familiar with that food bank, and how much waste goes to that. There are a lot of people double-dipping. They return the food. I don't, and that's neither here, I'll say. But what, what, what we're doing at Angel in Action, we're helping the working people. The people who will not go to the food bank be, because they're too proud. They've been working their whole life, and then they just need one hand up during the week to get them through. Um, help them through the holidays so they can have a meal. Um, and these are hard-working people that go out every day, but yet the state and government then doesn't think they deserve, or they don't, they make too much money, but they don't. Um, but I see so much waste over there, and it's, they have so much food to pass around. I just, I, I've seen it so much, it just makes me, makes me ill.
Can I make a suggestion then?
Mm-hmm.
Um, two thousand to the veterans, uh, one thousand as for the electric, for National Grid, um, four thousand to the Food Cupboard, and one thousand to Angel in Action.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say four thousand to Angel in Action. I'm just kidding.
I upped you four eighty.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
That would leave us two more-
I don't wanna take away from the food bank. I'm just saying, if you're-
That would, that would still leave us with two more thousand to, to, that would still leave us with two thousand for anything that comes forward after that. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that.
Again, I don't wanna take away from the food bank. I'm just telling you, if you're feeling bad-taking from them to give to the veterans, I don't, I want you to know.
No matter what, I feel like we're gonna feel bad that some, there's, there's only so much money to give.
Well, and again, if we give them four thousand now, which change our mon, and, and again, I will reach out to Dan Sylvester.
Did they request anything?
He requests the same amount every year.
Yeah, well, cool.
Um, and, and again, he usually comes here and gives us statistics, and tells you what's going on, how many families he feeds, and, you know. So if you wanna say four thousand now, and then you figure out that you might wanna give fifteen hundred dollars later, at least they have something for Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what my concern is, and, you know, that's-
And they, the Senior Center has, they cover every single person in, in West Wall, for-
And I, I believe also, uh, at the VFW, I believe they wanna do, like what they did for you last night. They wanna do, uh, the Food Cupboard for one of their future, uh, fundraising nights.
The Food Cupboard gets a lot of, a lot of backup. I know this. And then the, as far as baskets go, there is not one person in the town of West Walk that goes without a holiday basket. Between the Senior Center, between myself, between Jason, between Help the Homeless, all right, we, we, we had more than enough last year. I was actually giving them to people who didn't even need them, because I had so much donated to us. So, there's not one person that goes without a holiday basket.
Thank you, Pop.
Sorry.
Pop Shires, West Walk, Veterans Council, two twenty-nine East Greenwich Avenue. We appreciate the offer, uh, looking at a proposal for two thousand. If we can maintain the fifteen hundred, I, you know, that way, if you had other nonprofits, we are financially constrained. We know the town's financially constrained. We can get by with fifteen hundred.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You should get that just for offering.
Richard Hoover, Pike Street. I've been in contact with Amanda Roberts. Uh, she'd be willing with Oregon School to do a, uh, food drive. I would recommend Deb reach out to her. She just, she reached out to me. Uh, if not, we'll, you know, she can donate to whatever. Thank you for putting the Steelers on there. My son's played for the Steelers for two years. We have a rough field. We have even rougher lighting. There's some nights the fuses blow. There's nights we have to leave at seven o'clock, 'cause we can't see.
That's good for you.
There, no. My son doesn't, has too much energy. There's nights we're lighting that field up with our cars. So thank you to Jason Luchardi to, uh, putting that on the agenda. I think it'll be well, well-appreciated.
Alright, so let's just go over the dollar amounts again. Jay, and Jay, Jay, now you threw out dollars.
Steelers, Steelers would be one thousand. Angel in Action, I have at five twenty, which was their request. Um, the Veterans Council at fifteen hundred. And then the remaining, what is, what is remaining at this point?
At that point, um, like I said, there's twenty, two thousand, I'm sorry, three thousand twenty.
Is that with the food bank at?
That's out the food bank. There's three thousand twenty spent on the dollar amount you just gave.
Alright, so there's, there's seven, six thousand nine hundred and eighty left.
Nine eighty, yes.
Yeah, we all, we all know that the animal shelter will be coming into play.
So how mu, how much do we want for the, for the cupboard?
Uh, again, if, if you-
Four thousand for now?
I just wanna, what does the council wanna agree on? That's all I'm asking. I mean, if we wanna give something to the Food Cupboard for Thanksgiving, and then reassess, and see if anything else comes in.
Do like you said, give them the four thousand now for Thanksgiving, and then we'll revisit this with the rest of the money. Yeah.
So with that being said, I have a motion on the floor, and it's one thousand to the Steel, Steelers, five twenty for Angels in Action, fifteen hundred to the Veterans Council, and four thousand to the Food Cupboard.
I'll, I'll second.
Any public comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Discussion Action, Shippey Avenue, Dranich Projects, sponsored by Councilman Messier.
Uh, this was, I mean, this was pretty much covered by, uh, by Dave Paccosi and, and Mark Corullo earlier, but the project is, is on course. There was, there were some bumps in the road along the way, but we're still on course. Still, uh, still within budget. And, uh, tomorrow, tomorrow morning, there's gonna be a meeting. Every, every Wednesday morning, there's a meeting on site. Uh, so I will be, uh, if I don't, Pete, do you, Pete, you have a question? I see you standing up. But, uh, I'll give an update, um, following tomorrow's meeting, if there's anything else. But Pete's right in the, uh, round zero, so.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Pete's out there every day, so.
Somebody's gotta supervise the project. Oh, sorry, I didn't see you. I have a couple of concerns. Um, actually, Dave, Dave was out with me, and we were negotiating property boundary lines. Here's the plot map of my property, that people say that's not mine. Where Dave was out there a couple of times. Here's my deed. This was founded today in the clerk's office. That is my property. I spoke with Mark Corullo. He's gonna dig a little bit deeper. My problem is, is that I have eight trees that they're gonna take down. I asked the town, I'm asking you gentlemen, or, or Jay, or Dave, to stop the trees from being, coming down until we determine whose property is which. This clearly shows that it's my land. I'm being told it's not. I've been told that there's no boundary markers. So when the surveying company comes in, where's their reference points? If there's no boundary mark- If there's no boundary markers, what are they measuring by? Nobody knows.
Who is the surveyor?
You would... I'm not even gonna try to pronounce it.
Fussin' O'Neil.
Fussin' O'Neil.
Well, then they should have boundary lines, Dave, no?
What they did when they came out originally, they were out twice, and they measured the front of my house, and then they measured the width of my house, and they went from the front to the stockade fence that I have along my driveway, that's it, and then they went from the front, I have a gate that goes into my backyard, they went from that to the back gate.
There's gotta be points.
There is none.
There has to be.
There is none.
And I guarantee you, boy has got the points, guaranteed.
I, I assume that Fussin' O'Neil will have, if they did a survey of the property, that's something we will be addressing tomorrow at our meeting.
What, what point in the project is this, is going through that portion of?
It won't delay the project right now, we're heading up to Shippey right now because we want to get that main line connected.
I'm just concerned with Mr. Cottrell's set of boundaries trees, I don't want them to knock down the trees and then find out that it was his property, and now we're buying new trees.
We will not, we will not proceed until we square it away.
The trees, David, have to come down, period, they have to come down for, to allow the pipe to come through, there's one tree, in specific, not, not the maple tree that you and I spoke with, I have a brother-in-law that's an Iraqi vet, he put that tree, a cedar tree, in my yard, it's marked to be taken out, I don't want that tree touched, if they want to dig it up...
And replant it.
Replant it somewhere in my yard when it's done, I have no problem with that.
That's, now, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, sometimes, sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't, I know we have an issue with Abervites in a different yard where they can be replaced, I understand the sentimental value to the tree here, so what are the, what are the chances that it could be replaced and put back?
I'll have to take a look at it when I get out there tomorrow, because it's the first I'm hearing of it, so I'll take a look at it tomorrow.
I, I brought that up to Mark this morning when I was here, and Mark wasn't aware, it was actually right where you parked on the backside of my property, if you park there tomorrow, you'll see that tree, I, I, I just want to have that tree moved.
So, let's see where they come from the meeting tomorrow, and then we'll get back...
I'll come talk to you tomorrow after the meeting.
This, this clearly says, and Mark, and Mark agrees, this, I mean, if I can approach...
Yes.
You, 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 actually both of you know, these are my two lots, okay, here's the, here's the building, the big white building.
That big building, yeah.
Here's the drain, this is clearly all mine.
Yep.
And these trees, some, you know, the big maple tree, which, when you were out, is roughly here.
And again, when the town's doing stuff like this, I mean, we need to try to accommodate the homeowner, too.
Here's the drain, here's the property lines of what's happening, that will, when you see the fence, that's even going, but the big one, the fence goes.
So basically, just, the trees have to come out, you just want one replanted, you want to save one, replant it.
Well, I want to keep the trees from being cut down until we can start the new property too, because I'm being told, I was told in a meeting with Ernie, and, and Dave, and Mark Corullo, it's not, not my property, that's what I was told, so I went digging.
Okay.
Here's my deed.
So, Dave, you're meeting tomorrow, and you guys can discuss this before I...
I'll, I'll swing by as soon as the meeting's done.
Now, what happens if that is his property, and there's no right of way there, how does the drainage continue?
Great question, Councilman Padula, because according, now, on the, on the, on the, on your website, that you use, the planning website, that's got all the maps, you can punch in easements, the easement that's supposedly in place, there's no denying that there's a pipe there, there's a pipe there, that easement doesn't show up on the map, nothing shows up on the map, no easements anywhere, there's no record of the pipe that comes through the street.
You know, once you give an easement, you lose property value, right?
What am I gonna do, Angel, will it be flooded? For how many more years?
If you give permission to go through your yard and put that pipe, I'm not, if I, I'm not, no eternity by far, but, I wouldn't give them the easement to that pipe, that's a drain pipe, but then again, you gotta watch out, if you ever have problems with that pipe and you own it.
Right.
You're in trouble there, too, so you're, you're stuck between a rock and a hard place.
What about when I sell my house?
That land, with that easement, that land is reckless.
With the flooding, it would be a worse situation if the, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, if it's resolved in the flooding.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, right, I mean, if you correct me if I'm wrong, you're right in the middle of it.
Either way, he's gonna get, he's gonna get jipped.
No, but, but, Angel, I, my property has subject to drainage to the town of West Waller in my deed also, and...
But I don't have anything that says that.
No, I'm saying, and, and again, if I didn't give them that subject to drainage for the town of West Waller, back in whatever, 1990 something, I purchased the land with that easement.
It's funny you say 19...
And, and again, if, when I purchased the land, I was more worried about flooding in my area if that drainage wasn't there, you know what I mean, so it's, like you said...
It also goes back to the ordinance, I was just putting, place two where, you know, putting water on other people's property, that's what the town's doing, but we've argued that before, but I just want to point something else out here, this, I, I found this comic book, this is the plot map of my property, look what it was, there's no updated version?
1896.
1896.
10 a.m.
How old were you then, Pete?
Oh, I wasn't even a twinkle.
Sixteen?
I wasn't even a twinkle.
Sixteen.
But, so we could solve it.
Where would you have them?
1973.
My guess is 1973, they would be...
The deed should say it, I mean, the deed should say it.
Yeah, this is gonna be updated, it won't.
My deeds, I have mine.
Look, see if, see if they can resolve that first thing in the morning, I know if they don't, you'll call one of us.
There's truth to that.
I'll, I'll come by and talk to you as soon as we...
You know, I don't want to cut the trees if it's not, I know they gotta cut the trees, so that's, it's inevitable that they're gonna go, but if they're gonna cut them, replace them, I want something in writing that the town, or whomever, Cardes, whomever, is gonna replace those trees, because both of you gentlemen have been out to my property, I've lifted a patio, actually, you came out over the summer, where we, my wife and I were sitting, I lifted, we had a stone patio I had to lift that I thought was mine, Mark Corullo told me, oh, that's not your property, you gotta move it, so we moved it, I moved Abervites, I moved them, and now, doing a little digging, I shouldn't have moved nothing, according to the records in the town hall, that's my property.
They'll go through it tomorrow morning, Pete. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Factory Street Playground, sponsored by Councilman Messier.
Again, I didn't know Mark Corullo was gonna bring this up, but he kinda mentioned the playground, it's, there was a delay, somebody in the office of Pro-Bilt passed away, we get an extension for the, for the grant, but on, two weeks from yesterday, roughly, we're gonna be starting up there on the playground, and it's all, it's gonna take about nine days, it's prefab, so it's not gonna take long to do, so it should be done by the second week of November, but it'll be completed, and we're gonna be having a ribbon cutting ceremony from that point forward, we'll set a date, or, or the council will set a date if I'm not here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharing Town Council Correspondence to the Public, Councilman Messier.
It's concerning, last meeting, constituent came up and read verbatim some correspondence from the, from the town council, and I know for a fact, from the constituent that brought it up, I did not send it to her, so it's concerning to me that when we're trying to have correspondence with each other as a council, or we're getting information to us in email, not necessarily responding, that it's, it's being leaked to constituents, so that's a concern, I don't know if anybody else has something to add to that, but...
The only, the only concern I have with that is, I shouldn't, if there's a problem with the email I send, or somebody sends, I'd rather hear it from one of you and not from the constituent, that's the only concern I have, because if, if you, if I send you an email saying this is on the agenda, and you have a problem with it, I would like to hear it from the council, not from the general public, that's just not fair to us, and it just, it just doesn't do good for us as, as a group here, because if, if you're gonna, if you have an issue, or whatever, bring it to us, bring it to me, I do set the agenda, it, it, and I, I do try to keep control of these meetings, and if I can't keep control of meetings, and I, and you don't share with me your true feelings, and then a constituent shares with me their true feeling, then how, how does that work?
Well, I have an issue about that, and I'll bring it up, it's, the title was, mine's more with social media, where, as long as we're talking about this, you brought it up, you put it on there on a Thursday, on a Thursday morning, "The Missing $7 Million" was the title, and I got calls from several people asking me, what is this, what does this mean, where did it come from? Right, which, it's, it's not a good position to be in, I did receive your email, as well as it was sent to the whole council, on a Friday evening, so a day and a half went by, with this went to the public first, and again, it's happened, it isn't the first time it happened, where a councilman finds something out when, before every, after everybody else has. It's a same thing, it's a same, and the questions I got on that, you can't answer, where did it come from, who knew about?
Here's what happens, hold on, here's what happens, you guys put stuff on the agenda, I don't know about it, and then Paula calls me on Thursday to go over the agenda, and the one thing I've asked everybody prior to the agenda, putting stuff on the agenda, is just give us a heads up, or give me a heads up, so I know what it is, because you're in the same boat I, I am in, I get the phone calls, too, what's this about, I don't know, I don't know why you put it on, or whatever, I, I, I'm in the same boat as you are.
Yeah, but I, I disagree, partly, I disagree, if a councilman has something to put on the agenda for his constituents, or something that he has a concern of, I don't think the four of you should be, or four of whoever didn't put it on there should be concerned on what it is, he knows what he's doing to put it on, when I put something on, I know why I put it on, and if you want to know what it is, you call me and ask me what it is, I don't have to explain to all four of you why I put something, just like you don't have to explain to four of us why you put it on, that's your job, you put something on the agenda that's as, as a, a concern to your constituents, or your ward, and it goes on the agenda.
The agenda comes out on a, on relatively, say, a Thursday.
First it comes out too late.
Thursday, comes out on a Thursday. I, I'll be honest with you, and please, my constituents don't take this the wrong way, but I'm not gonna discuss that entire agenda item with, with people on the phone, or definitely not on social media, prior to the council meeting, it's gonna be out at the council meeting, I'll gladly discuss it with you at the council meeting, that's the whole point of putting, creating an agenda. Am I, am I wrong?
I'm going back...
Otherwise, we'll just have the council meeting on Facebook.
But I'm going, but Jay, I'm going back to what Councilman Messier's original concern was, okay, I sent an email out to the council, okay, it was strictly said, do you want the meeting to be public or executive, okay, and if it's going to be public, and my exact email was, if it's going to be public, I am not gonna allow public comment on it, nobody said boo on that, nobody said nothing, Councilman Padula replied back to me individually and said, "Public," you responded back to me separately and said, if a council member puts something on the agenda, it should be on the agenda, I did not receive a response from either one of these gentlemen, but then, nobody said boo about anything, a constituent comes up and reads my exact email, now, if Councilman Padula had an issue, or if you had an issue with it being no public comment, you should have had that conversation with me, not with the private citizen that comes up to the microphone and say that.
I didn't, I didn't pay attention to that, I just wanted that as part of...
She read it verbatim.
Verbatim. How do you know that these two gave it to him?
I'm not saying they, I said somebody, there's only five of us.
We just pointed them to her directly.
No, there's only two that responded to the email, they, that's how I'm pointing them out, he responded to me, he responds to me, these two gentlemen did not respond whatsoever on the situation.
It's not tough to connect, it's not tough to connect the dots, I mean, I did, I did not send it to her.
Wait a minute, I'm not doing another dot to dot, I had that done two years ago.
Listen, stop the dot to dots, I don't want to get into this.
I do, dot to dot.
I'm just saying...
Connect the dots.
Councilman, please, we've been going good so far all night, what I'm...
The night's not over.
Oh, I'm sure, but again, all's I'm saying is, my email was only between five of us, it could have been John, it could have been Jay, it could have been Angelo, it could have been you, I know it wasn't me, they read it verbatim up there at the microphone, verbatim, not per se, word for word what my email said.
Well, when I, when I sent something, I admit it, you don't have, you don't have to ask me twice, just like when you said, where'd you get that information, it's, you got that on Facebook, I said, no, I got it from the tax assessor's office and I gave it to him, so I have nothing to hide, if I put that out there...
I have nothing to hide either, Mr....
No, and I believe, I agree with you, that if an email's sent amongst the five of us, then it stays amongst the five of us.
Yes, they were, they were in agreement.
But, going forward, this whole Facebook shit's gonna stop.
Can I get rid of Facebook?
I'm, I'm, no, you're the one that brought it here.
I didn't bring it Facebook.
Yes you did, yes you did, all this, no, stop, stop, hey, I had enough, I had, I had enough.
Guys, just relax, Jay.
I'm perfectly relaxed, but I get the calls, I get the calls, and a lot of them are from Ward 3, and I take the calls, should I? I don't know, should I take the calls? I refer them as the etiquette that I thought we had to the councilman in that particular ward, the response I get is, I don't feel comfortable talking to my councilman, okay, I don't, and I don't ask why, I don't care why, I have enough to handle in Ward 4, and then I get, I don't want my business all over social media, what do I say? Do I help these people or not? I can refer them to you? What do you want me to do? I've had enough, the Facebook is a poison, I've said it time and time again, you can agree with me or not, look at what's happening, if anybody out here is on Facebook and you've seen everything that's going on, I think it's absolutely, it's, it's beyond disgusting, it's malicious, and it makes us, it makes us look like a laughingstock, and we're not united, we're not, and it, that's just how it is, you know, I'd like it to be different, I tried, but it isn't, it is what it is, that's it, sorry for raising my voice.
All right, next subject.
The Town's Future Fiscal Responsibility, sponsored by Councilman Lichardi.
I'm bringing this up, I haven't really discussed this with Ernie, so, so please don't take any offense to this, but I've had a few constituents call me over the last couple of weeks with concerns, and it, it was basically the same few concerns, A, we had a five-year plan, which, a few years ago, before you got here, Ernie, this was the bible, if you were against the five-year plan, then there was something wrong with you, and this was all over social media, too, like you wouldn't believe, with inaccurate responses, from what I gather, and I confirm this with Kristen, we would currently be in the, the final year of the five-year plan, correct? So, all of a sudden, our previous town manager leaves, we have an interim town manager, he's finding some issues, financial issues, he goes back to his, his job as planner, you come in, you find more financial issues, but you don't hear anything more of the five-year plan, are we still working with this five-year plan, or no? Because what I, what I was told is, if we don't file the five-year plan for the five years, and I'm just, I'm just, I want to make sure that I'm correct with this, that the state's gonna take over, everybody's gonna lose their jobs, we're gonna be in this big financial crisis.
Five-year plan was supposed to get us out of that.
Well, I mean, it, I'm just asking the question, because I don't know.
Let me clarify something on the five-year plan, first of all, the five-year plan was originally to correct the pension contributions, okay, and to keep the town employees, their pension system in place, that has happened, okay, we went from one and a half million dollars a year of a contribution to $10 million a year in contribution, so when everybody says the budget was 84 million and is now 92, do the basic math, right there is 8,000, 8 million more in pension contributions, now, tax collection rates, that was not part of a five-year plan, raising taxes 4% was part of the five-year plan, we did not do that, on year one, the tax collection was supposed to be, I mean, the tax rate was supposed to be about 4%, we raised it one and a half to vote the taxpayer.
I'm just asking.
I want to clarify.
All right, I want to, I want to answer that, too, it seems to be twisted around a little bit, we all know what happened to the pension fund, and it doesn't take one person not to fund the pension, if you were here during budget time, people were making comments that we only funded it one and a half million or $2 million a year, it's just like this year when they took away from the OPAD 500,000, it takes three votes to do that, not one person can do that, number one, and we didn't have the money, and if you went on the 4% increase, think about this, if you went on a 4%, we went from 13th highest taxes in the state to fourth right now, if we did that, we'd be number one, keep that in mind, keep in mind that the pension contributions are going up, whenever they say, that they said it's going up, it's going up, sooner or later, it's going up, when I looked on that information, it was gonna start... When I looked on that information, it was going to start going up next year. Your taxes are going up again. Our property values are plummeting. You're getting at least, and I don't care what people think they know what they're saying on Facebook about a reevaluation. Our taxes don't go up? Bullshit. Thirty-three and a third percent go up. Thirty-three and a third percent go down. And thirty-three and a third percent stay the same. So you do the math on a four percent, the manager already mentioned, we need a substantial tax increase this year. I don't see anybody advertising on their pamphlets going door to door to support the five-year plan anymore.
Mine was on there.
Well, my question is, then I answered, are we currently operating in that five-year plan?
Uh, five-year plan, uh, answer your question? No. The five-year plan was a document. The document was published. Uh, there was some, I believe in prior years, some information as where you would be in it. Uh, you know, as we know that there were assumptions that were made in the development of a plan that didn't come to fruition. Whether they be revenues or expenses. So the five-year plan, as far as I'm concerned, when I came in, uh, that wasn't a concern of mine. My, my concern was the FY eighteen budget to make sure that was in balance and not have a deficit in the black, which we did. And the audit is being conducted now. The second concern that I had was make sure that the recommendation to the council was for a proper FY nineteen budget. Now, a lot of the tax increase for the FY nineteen budget was a result of the, the fundamental flaws that was in the prior year. We had to have a, a large increase in taxes just to make up for the flaws in eighteen. So those were the first two priorities to make sure that eighteen was going to be in the black, which it will be as far as our projections are. And have a budget in nineteen that is workable. No major flaws in the budget that we, we know of. And, and if everything goes according to plan, uh, you know, we will have a slight, uh, surplus. Now, if the economy is better than what we expect, more revenues will come in from the economy, a good economy, which is occurring. The economy today is much better than it was a year ago, two years ago, three years ago, five years ago. So the economy by all measurements is doing well. So, uh, to answer your question, so those are the two priorities that I had. And then I had another priority, which we've been working on is the development of, uh, operate, review operations of departments and improve them. And we're doing that with the assist, with the council's, uh, help and assistance. So to, to answer your question, uh, five-year plan, when I came in, wasn't a concern of mine. If you look at prior budgets, there was where we are to the five-year plan, the budget nineteen, we didn't have it. And as far as I'm concerned, uh, we started from, uh, scratch. So we are in the process of going forward, having a good plan in place. And as we go forward, every year you evaluate. If you have a plan, multi-year plan, you have to evaluate it every year and revise it every year because things change. You can't have a stagnant plan. I mean, who would have thought that the state would have, after they had a motor, a motor vehicle reimbursement? Giving money to cities and towns. I think it was up to fifty-five hundred. Then the economy gets worse. What happens? The governor says, you know what? We can't afford it. So that goes away. That had to be absorbed by all local taxes because it was gone. So to make a, a multi-year projection is very hard. It has to be reviewed each and every year and the outlying years have to be changed to reflect that. That's just the way I would do things. But to answer your question, is it, is it a document that we're working with? No, no. Is, you know, we, we evaluated the nineteen budget for what the needs were of the community based upon what the needs were. The recommendation went to the council.
Thank you very much. I have a couple, just a couple more points I'd like to make regarding finances. Um, I've said this before at, at a few meetings and this really does bother me. I know when, um, interim chief Knott and chief Verone came up at the last meeting, they spoke about, uh, potential. I think my number's nineteen between both, up to twenty possible employees retiring, um, this, this upcoming year. Um, we're already at a three point six percent tax increase. And I know, am I correct with this year, the three point six that you just had? Three point four? Three point three? Okay, sorry. Um, but it's pretty high. Um, but with, with these employees retiring, they're, they're able to take their earned time, which they, they earned. Um, please don't make any mistake about what I'm saying and, and nobody twist it. Um, that's a lot of people possibly exiting at one time. And we know how difficult it is to fill the police department. But when these people come in, when these people retire, people are replacing them. So just for round numbers sake, and I, I don't know if my, my numbers are off, but if you have an employee coming in and just, just say forty thousand dollars. And they contribute ten percent to their pension, that's four thousand. But that, that should correlate to an employee leaving, correct? At, just say that employee makes, exiting makes thirty thousand. So you have four thousand going, it's thirty thousand. So it's a negative twenty-six thousand per employee. If I'm doing this right. If I'm not, please tell me. You can say it's all right. It's, it's fine. If I'm not saying, I'm just trying to figure this out because it is a concern. And I don't have a car in the race here, but I'm looking at everything you hear with the pensions. That I really don't want to be part of the council where people can say, hey, Lichardi was on that council and now I don't get my pension.
Well, just to answer your question, when a employee leaves, and again, one of the concerns when, in the scenario when someone retires. They've been here quite a few years. And when it comes to, you know, police and fire, they are the senior people in command positions. When they retire, that experience goes with them. And then what's going to happen is there'll be promotions and people will go into those positions. Those people into those positions are going to be paying. They're going to be receiving the same salary as their predecessor. And, uh, you know, their, their tenure, uh, funds. So the same amounts going in that would have gone in, uh, with, uh, you know, if a captain retires, it's going to be replaced with a captain. They're going to get captain's pay. They're going to be making the required contributions from their pensions. So it's going to be almost even where then you have the lower end coming in. Uh, but the critical, one of the critical elements is you're losing a lot of experienced people. And when you have young force coming in, you know, you don't have that experience. But part of the financial issue is the, you know, the payments they make when they retire. And you know that in FY eighteen, oh, seventeen, yeah, seventeen's budget, uh, that's, that dollar amount was just blown to pieces. Now, we increased that this year for the severance payments. That could be blown to pieces too, because you don't know how many is going to retire, when they're going to retire.
Just one Ernie, that retires two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our new sick time and vacation time. One employee.
Are we in trouble with, I guess I should ask this question because I apologize. Are we in trouble with our pension?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Funding our pension?
Well, the pension is in critical condition. Critical condition is anything under.
And critical since two thousand.
Right, sixty percent. Anything under sixty percent is critical. Ideally, a hundred percent, but not, very few people, communities have that. In fact, uh, looking back, uh, West Warwick had a pension plan that was a hundred and four hundred and nine percent funded at one time. But to answer your question, it's in critical condition, uh, and need, but, but there is a funding plan for that. And the town is making the funding plan, funding plan. But as was stated.
It's also a twenty-five-year plan.
Right, twenty-five-year plan. But every year there is a schedule to go up. If you go and look at the actual valuation, every year there's a schedule in there that will tell you based upon the information at that time, what next year's contribution will be. Uh, right now, the actuary is doing an actual plan as of, uh, July first of two thousand eighteen. They'll be submitting that to the pension board probably in the next month or two. And that plan will say how much should be the town's contribution in the FY nineteen budget. Now, the projections they have, it goes up so much per year. Now, what can affect that? The stock market can affect it. Now, we all know that the stock market is doing very well. Contributions come in in a number of ways. It's the employee's contribution, the town's contribution. The other contribution is the stock market, investments. Now, investments have been going very well. So there's a benchmark of how much the town needs to receive in its pension contrib, in its investment income. Now, is that going to be up or down? And that's going to affect evaluation. Now, I think just by what we've seen with the stock market, the records, again, this is as of July first eighteen, it's record highs. So the investment income should be higher than what was expected. Now, if it's higher than what's expected, that could affect the contrib, will affect the contributions going forward. And it may be a little bit less than was programmed a year ago. Now, again, that can flip. If you have a recession, that investment income goes down, then you have an increase in your pension contributions. But I would think that the investment income is going to be higher than what we had estimated, but we'll know shortly. The income from the employees is going to be relatively constant because if you have promotions, uh, going into positions. They're going to be making the same salary as their predecessor and it's going to be the same, uh, employee, uh, contribution for their pension. Now, where you have a lag is the, uh, people coming in, you know, uh, you know, the younger people. But you, but, but the pensions will be pretty much, the salaries will be pretty much the same. So to answer your question, those are the three stools, employee, town, and investments. So we're hoping investments will go well. If you have more and more retirees than you anticipate, that's going to affect it as well. Because it anticipates so many retirements. If you have a whole town that retire, that will be a negative impact, not in what's going to be done in the FY nineteen budget. Because that's going to be based upon July first eighteen. If you have a lot of retirements, when they do the evaluation again in July first of two thousand nineteen, that, and your, your cash out goes up.
Right.
Then your contribution will go up. But, you know, so we're hoping that the investment income, I would think, is going to be substantial, would be higher than what we estimate. But, but that's always a moving figure. Depends upon the economy, how many retirements you have, you know, uh, factors in wage increases. Although the valuations assume wage increases. They always do. And I don't recall what the current one says, but it's, it's anticipated. So again, to answer, to answer your question, all of this has effects on contributions, retirements, investment, how much the town puts in, how much employees put in.
Thanks, Ernie.
Problem Properties Garbage Mattresses sponsored by Councilman Padula.
Yes, um, it's the same properties, Prospect Hill. Dave has sent a truck, a lot of, there was five mattresses on the sidewalk and they were staying there. And when I called Dave to keep complaining about it, it was infested with bed bugs. Dave had to send a man up there with a loader, dispose of the mattresses. These are the same three and four properties that's been ongoing for years. Um, matter of fact, when, when I was a kid and hung around in that area, they used to call that Fort Apache, the Bronx. So, and it's the same owners, they're, um, non-residents, they don't live here. They have nothing but problems. Now that we have a DPW director, uh, I talked to Dave and Dave's got some ideas. We're going to get some ordinances where we're going to find these people heavily. Uh, we should not, the taxpayers should not clean up apartment houses that are moving out because that landlord definitely got a damaged deposit. So he can use that as his cleanup fees. And the people that live there don't care because they're moving, they're getting evicted daily. So it's this landlord that we have to hold, uh, responsible. Dave, you want to add to what, what's going on with, and it's not just my, my district, it's all over the place.
Actually, on that one particular property, what we found when we got there, what looked like five mattresses turned into eleven mattresses. That's what was there at the time. Uh, and once they're contaminated like that, now it's a seventy-five dollar per mattress charge. Uh, so we will be going after that property for a total of around eight hundred and fifty dollars on that property.
Plus our labor with the loader in the.
Yes, I added labor, I added everything. But, uh, I, I can tell you in my short time here, I've been getting around this town as much as possible. And it's, it's happening all over this town and it appears to be rental properties. Uh, and it appears to spike around the beginning or the end of each month. Uh, what's happening is a lot of these people that move out of these rental properties, they don't take anything with them. They put it out on the curb. Uh, I've worked on some legislation in Warwick similar to this because we were having the same property, uh, same problem. And, uh, what we did was we limited the number of pieces you can put out at a time. Because what's happening here, you can ride through some parts of town and where it's mostly homeowners that live in their own homes. You don't have this problem. When you get into the parts of town where it's heavily, uh, rental property. We view this as rental property, although they are entitled as taxpayers on that property to receive any service that everyone else receives in the city. But they go way beyond what the regular service should be in the city. And the concern I have is every time we go to one of these, what we call move outs, it takes up substantial room in the truck, fills the truck faster, extra trip to the landfill. And we are going, we're on track to go over our cap on solid waste. Once you go over your cap with your regular household garbage, which really is what we need to get off the streets every day. You're going to go from forty-seven dollars a ton to sixty-seven dollars a ton once you exceed that cap. That's a lot of money the taxpayers are going to be putting out.
And it's a lot of this, it's a lot of, and like Angela pointed out, it's a lot of the same residences where the landlords.
What we're doing is we're subsidizing these rental properties. And, and the legislation I worked on, the last city that I worked for was they were going to be responsible to get a dumpster themselves to clean up their properties afterward. And we put a limit on how many items they can actually put out for bulky item pickup.
Do we have a limit? I mean, I know that, I mean, do we have a limit before Nicole in the past? I mean, I know you, I know you don't handle it now. I know the DPW handles it, but you did it for long enough where.
So, all right, so I want to say the two and a half year, the two and a half years that we were me at disposal was handling it. Um, I would go through the list and if, one of the reasons why was to defer things that were recyclable off that list, also to see what they had. And if they were giving me a large amount of items, then I would suggest that this is, this we considered a trash haul. You need a dumpster. It's just too much to handle. So that was then. I believe they're following the same suit for the most part.
Thanks. Well, Dave, we're going to draw something out for Alda Fury to come up with some kind of ordinance. You already did the legislation.
I would be happy to work with you on that.
I would. That has to be straightened out. It's always the same properties. I'm speaking for my one. Them same four houses, uh, people go up that hill to go to their condos. People are, are very proud of their properties. They keep their yards very well maintained, very well groomed. And when you go by that and people are coming to visit you, you're afraid to go up the hill. You're saying, what are we getting into in this section?
And I would just add that it's not fear to the taxpayers as a whole to be subsidizing rental properties, which I, which I consider income.
I had them, I had sixteen apartment houses. It's a business.
Correct.
I didn't bring stuff out to the garbage. We had dumpsters. When we had a clean out or a jackpot, we took it off their damaged deposits. Or if there was damage, the insurance company paid for you to get rid of that. They're getting the money there and charging the taxpayers to get rid of it. So they're, they're, they're scoring.
Correct.
Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
Sorry I kept you here, Natalie.
That's okay.
Upcoming appointments, Sure Use Appeals Board, alternate member with a term to expire ten, ten twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. West Warwick Public Library Trustees, one term to expire two, two thousand nineteen. Board of Tenant Affairs, one term to expire three, three, three twenty twenty public. One term to expire four twenty twenty public. One term to expire four twenty twenty, Clyde Towers. One term to expire four twenty twenty, West Warwick Manor. One term to expire eight twenty twenty, West Warwick Manor. Zoning Board of Review, one term to expire seven twenty. Alternate to expire seven twenty twenty. Juvenile Hearing Board, one term to expire twelve two thousand eighteen. Pension Committee, one term to expire eleven eighteen twenty twenty. West Warwick Housing Authority, one five-year term. Technology Committee, Ward One, term to expire twelve thirty-one eighteen. Ward Two, term to expire twelve thirty-one eighteen. Ward Three, term to expire twelve thirty-one eighteen. Ward Four, one term to expire twelve thirty-one eighteen. Ward Five, term to expire twelve thirty-one eighteen. Public comment, comments will only be addressed to the town council and will take them under advisement. When addressing the town council, please state your name and address. Please conduct yourself in an orderly and respectful fashion. The comments of citizens accessing this portion of our meeting are neither adopted nor endorsed by this body, but heard as requested.
Anything from the council first? Nothing? Alan?
Alan Palazzo, Fire Robin Lane, Westwark, and I have a couple of issues or questions with regard to the executive session. I was here for the sewer committee meeting, I was here for the opening of the council meeting, or any votes taken within those executive sessions? Not even to table items?
I just said no.
He said no, okay, thank you very much. Part two is executive session regarding the performance of the solicitor. I was just wondering, since he is not a town employee, but he is a vendor, contractor, why was that, that not held in public session, as you were going to do with the disposal firm several months ago?
Who's held an executive session?
That's your answer, that's your justification, because you decided to hold it in executive session, even though it did not concern the town employee?
It concerns an appoint- appointed official.
A contractor, thank you. Part two is, during that executive session, who represented the town on a legal basis? An attorney associated with that firm?
I didn't speak, I can't speak on that one, it happened in executive session.
As a taxpayer, I would, I would like to know, who was the legal counsel for the town of Westwark in the town council? She can shake her head, I would like to know who represented the town, or did you have a meeting with executive session?
She was in executive session.
Even though she is associated with that firm? That's part one. Part two, let me continue on with a different question. I'm sure you're associated with the, the term RICO, and you're so, you acknowledge that under RICO, officials can be held accountable, not only in their official capacity, but personally, and that any damages associated with equal, with RICO are, maybe she can answer this one, would you give the number?
I'm not giving any answer to that. We'll take it under it.
If she doesn't know that, I will tell you, they're troubled. So, I just wanna put that out. And that's all I'm gonna say on that matter. Mr. Goslin, several meetings ago, you made a comment about an anniversary. Since that time, I have reseen mail at work, mail at home, this one's kinda funny, because they spelt my name wrong.
They do it on purpose.
It's exactly, it's being done on purpose. But the information contained in both of these goes back, I think Angelo was probably the only one alive back then. But I just wanted to let you know that on record, so she will know, several years ago, okay, 36 years after the accident, our acting town solicitor actually went to the Westwark Police Department and attempted to obtain the records of this accident. And the Westwark Police Chief at the time, because I followed up and spoke with him, informed him that, oh, we don't keep records 36 years ago, given the timeframe in question. So, I just wanted to point out that this has nothing to do with the town of Westwark, this has nothing to do with my running for any office, I am not running for any office, and this is bordering on slander and libel, and people need to be aware.
Alan, if I could find out who's sending you those, I would be the first one to tell you.
Well, put it this way, I will be retiring shortly, and my last job in the US Navy at the War College was in the Strategic Research Department. I'm sure you're very familiar with the reputation of the Naval War College. I know how to research, and someone once called me a bulldog, because once I bite, I don't back off. So, people can smile all they want, just like they were smiling when I was talking about the Westwark Pension Fund. And oh, by the way, I have raised the issue several times over the past 15 years, that our pension fund wronged our employees, it wronged the taxpayers. And at some point in time, someone should wake up and go after the financial advisors for this pound. You may not recover all the money that was lost, but you can recover something, and something is better than zero. And I will leave you with that.
Thank you, Alan.
This is absolutely disgusting.
I totally agree with you, Alan. It is very disgusting. It's totally awful you gave us all a copy, I totally agree with you 110%.
And oh, by the way, one more thing.
If I knew who it was, Alan, I'd be the first one to tell you, because I, and I did reach out to you tw- four times to speak to you on this matter.
The same rumor that was put forward about my entering the United States Navy, because it was a choice between going into the Navy or going to jail. Approximately three months after that accident, I was called into the office of the principal at Westwark High School on my birthday, that's how I remember it, when John Kelly specifically informed me that I had been appointed to the United States Military Academy at West Point. So much for rumors of juvenile delinquency and tarnishing my reputation.
Alan, thank you for your service, and again-
It was my pleasure.
I'm sincere of my heart, I'm telling you honestly, if I knew who was sending that letter to you, and I wish, and whoever it is, because I could sit here and say, the spoon, the spoon made me fat, if I could sit here and tell you who it was, I would honestly tell you, and whoever's doing it, if they're watching or whatever, needs to stop it, it is disgusting. As Councilman Lachaty said earlier, it is beyond disgusting.
Trust me, David, I will find out.
Alan, Alan, it's the same one that says, Mike, restaurant and lounge is a mafia hangout and a drug place.
I will find out.
He crossed the line.
Let me, let me just say this, I have received-
He better get a lot of money.
Numerous letters over the past six months.
Right next Denise.
Councilman, hold on. Over the last six months, I have received numerous anonymous letters, I've given them to everybody that they had, as, asinuated. Councilman, you got one, I gave it right to you. I got one on a police officer, I gave it to the chief. That's all I can do, okay?
David, just a point of order. You're a public official, you are quote, a legitimate target under-
I know, you're not-
New York Times, I says, I'm not even, I'm a taxpayer concerned about my town.
Alan, that's why I, I'm telling you honestly, if, if whoever it is needs to stop, because you are not a public official, you're not in the race, and even whoever's in the race or a public official, it should not be going on, it is disgusting.
Thank you, sir.
They can say what they want about a public official, but when they accuse him of a crime, they cross the line.
That's why I brought up the issue of RICO.
Pika Trail 25, the Wiki Street. Everybody knows back in January, back to my house, this is a whole different scenario here. January, $28,000 worth of damage from an ice dam. I'm a little lost, so. Couple meetings ago, a question was asked to the town manager. Was there any permits pulled after the fact? After the work was done? You failed to answer. Here's your answer, can you read that?
Sir, you can read it.
Permit pulled after the work was done? Okay?
What is this on, Pete?
What's that?
Say that again, what is that on?
This is on my house, this is on a, on a permit, that was pulled after the work was done.
So, you hired a contractor?
The contract, correct.
And did they pull a permit?
No. Okay? Now, it goes a little deeper, and it, it, it gets, this wasn't fun, this was not an experience, a, a fun experience. Here's the emails, if any of yous wanna read them, or you can go upstairs and look at my file.
Emails from, what, what, what do you mean?
Pete, don't say yous.
From you to you?
What's that?
Don't say yous, you'll get criticized.
Say that again?
What, what do you mean, emails? To, to who, from you?
These are from me, to the electrical inspector, back and forth. Here is the fire report. Okay? Here's the past. It's in here somewhere, trust me, I have it. Where they passed it. On a Thursday. I have a little dog, tripped my motion sensor, my whole house goes out. Should that happen after, after it passed? No. In the email, it states, "I would have never done that, but it held, so I passed it." The fire department comes out, checks my house. I get told to hire my own electrician, out of my own pocket, 1,500 bucks. Now, upstairs, if you go upstairs in, in the building, official's office, it says right on the wall, right? I believe you and I joked about it, I said, "I made the town money, $250 fine for late fire." Where's the $250 fine? Nothing. Should I keep going? This, this is, this is disturbing, that this, that this stuff is, is still going on. It's $28,000. That was the answer to your question, the, the question that was asked to you, and I'm not, I'm not trying to put you on-
Excuse me, what, what meeting was the question asked to me about your house?
Two meetings ago. Mr. Reed, Mr. Reed-
I think a constituent came up and asked a question if permits were being issued.
Okay, wait, you're coming up and accusing me of not responding to an answer, when somebody came up and said, "Building permits were being," a general question.
He asked you a question, correct.
Building permits are being issued without-
Are there?
Are there. And, and I, and you're saying that I was supposed to research something or do something?
No, 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 you didn't answer. You didn't answer, that's, that's what-
Okay. Building permits are not supposed to be issued without having all the, building permits supposed to be issued for prior to the work's done. Now, I've said during that report, there's a lot of times that contractors will go in and do work and not put, go out and say that.
This, this work was done in March, the permit was pulled on July 23rd.
Okay, and that was in your residence?
That is in my residence, correct. It, it, it goes on where, where, where Mr. Argenti, in the email that he sent to me, that-
Can I ask you something? How would I know if a permit, if work was done without a permit?
I was just gonna say, one thing on the homeowner, is if you hire a contractor-
It's on the contractor who pulled all the permits.
It is on the contractor, but again, it's also a little task of the homeowner to make sure they pulled a permit, because if I'm gonna hire somebody to put a deck on my house, especially me as a councilman, I'm gonna hire somebody to put a deck on my house, the first question I'm gonna say is, do you have, did you pull a permit? And I wanna see a copy of it, because I, I, first of all, I don't want my deck to fall off the house of a non-qualified person, and second, I don't want somebody to say, oh, he's a councilman, put a deck on my-
Oh, I'm, I'm responding.
Okay.
You come up, somebody comes up and they have an issue where they believe someone did work without a permit, they don't call the office, they don't say anything, they wait till a council meeting to come up and say, "Oh, is any work being done without permits?" And they know it, there's a permit that had, work's been done without a, a permit being issued, and they wait to a meeting, rather than calling the office, or calling the building department, calling my office, and, and the purpose of that was what? What, sir?
I just got this.
Was it try to embarrass-
No, I-
Myself or any town employee? If there's an issue you wanna deal with, please, deal with it. Call the office, report it to an official, and we'll deal with it. If we don't, okay, that's on us. Not playing games where, oh, are you sure that there's any, you know, work is being done without permits? We talked about earlier about this stuff, all right? Again, if there's an issue, please call the appropriate department, we'll deal with it. That's what, that's our job is to do. If something is not right, we try to fix it. It's not to come here and try to embarrass people, or say, I know something you don't know. You know, and to say, I didn't, I didn't answer a question or do research, how am I supposed to research a question that, do you know something is supposed to be done that wasn't? How would I know? I have no address, no information. So, please, I'm not, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, but if there's something like that, let us know, and we'll deal with it.
I mean, again, I, I agree, I agree, I agree to what you're saying, but this should be looked into, because this is, this is, this is serious. To where, to the, to the point where, I almost had a fire in my house. I just got this, I just, just got this not too long ago from Mary Ann, because I asked for it upstairs.
I will make my, I'll do this first thing tomorrow morning, find out about situation.
I, I wanna say, I've been on this council since 2006, and Joe Argenti's been here as electrical inspector.
I'm not, I'm not-
No, I just, I just wanna say, Joe Argenti is a damn good electrical inspector, state known, he teaches at CCRI, he does a phenomenal job, and if he made a mistake, and trust me, Joe will not sit there and hide behind a mistake, he would say, I made a mistake, and again, Joe is a phenomenal guy, and if there's something that he missed or whatever, they, you know, bring it up, I mean, Joe, Joe Argenti does so much for this town, and does so much for the constituents. I was building my house when I wasn't even a councilman, and Joe Argenti was the building, uh, the electrical inspector, and I ran all my own electric, and that man came in and looked at everything, and made sure I did everything perfect, knowing I was a homeowner doing my own electrical. I just, you know, I wanna stick up for Joe here, because I know his name's on that, and, and, and Joe is-
He, he asked for help, he asked, he asked for help in an email, it, it says it right in, Pete, I, I asked for help from the building side and got nothing.
And that gentleman's no longer here?
Yeah, he's gone. Correct. And, and if, if, if you want to-
They were throwing evidence on Joe. Joe's no building official, he's an electrical inspector.
I'm not throwing anything on Joe.
No, I just said, he was the previous building official.
Right, and, you know, I, I explained it to Councilman Goslin, why I can't have the new guy, because there's a conflict of interest with that, because he knows the contractor. So, how am I, how can I have him come in?
All building officials know contractors.
Yeah, of course, if you went by a building official knowing a contract, you wouldn't have anybody building.
My house was discussed, my house was discussed with, with, with the new building official. Prior to him coming on to, come, he, he was a building official in Coventry.
Yeah.
And he answered questions to the contractor on my house.
Oh, I don't know what's-
I, I don't know about that, Pete.
Oh, I know, I was standing right there when it was asked.
I, I think Mr. Zimulinski said it best, I think, schedule an appointment and get it resolved.
Well, i- i- if I have an address and information, then I can act. If I am given innuendo, or incomplete, or no information, then I cannot act. So, I appreciate you, the information, I would have preferred that you would have called and dealt with it that way, rather than coming in to a council meeting and try to-
I'm not trying to-
I don't know what, embarrass? You certainly could have resolved the issue.
To bring it out, to bring it out, that this is still going on. This was, we can talk in, in, in private, because I'm gonna start to get flustered. When I get aggravated, everybody knows what happens.
Take your feet.
Gentlemen, it's late, be quick. Derek Reed, 62 Andrews Avenue. Let me make something real clear. I applied for that position, to make sure things get done good in this town, make sure this town goes in the direction it should be going. I have a little issue. You guys said no, or tabled it, whatever you did, beautiful, but you need to know something. There's litigation with Reed's Landscaping, Town of Westwark, Jared Nunes, okay? If you do your homework, you will find out that Derek Reed is only by title, he is not an owner of Reed's Landscaping. Therefore, I am not stuck in between litigation and a town of Westwark. And then, to answer Jay's question about people reaching out to Jay because they don't trust their councilman, my councilman was the very first one to say no. Does that answer your question, why I called Jay and not Jay? Because he's automatically judging, okay? Reed's Landscaping is owned by my father, okay? I can't even go to the bank and cash a check, okay? I work for Reed's Landscaping, I have a title, just like you have a title at Cox Cable, you don't own Cox Communications, but you have a title, correct?
But if there was a situation here, I would not be involved with Cox Communications.
You're not?
If there was a situation up here, I would not be involved in. If this was a-
But I'm just making myself-
If I was going on a board-
Yeah.
That Cox Communications was represented on, and I was, and it had to do with town position?
Right. Okay. So, in my litigation, okay, when there was questions being asked, you recused yourself because Jared's your cousin, correct? You never recused yourself on any of it?
On this litigation?
On anything to do with Nunes Lane, Jared Nunes, all that?
Or, I, I have recused myself-
When it's been brought to your attention, you, you recuse yourself because you're related, right? Because Brian Moyles came up here and made the church- right? Because Brian Moye came up here and made it sure, you knew that. Okay?
I knew, I knew the.
So if I'm on the, if I'm on as a, if I'm on the planning board.
There's members of that board.
Yeah.
That could be deposed or whatever it be, may be. So why, again, we're not gonna talk about your litigation, and I said.
I'm not talking about my litigation, because you're wrong. It's not my litigation. You're right.
Again, if it gets resolved, we can look at it further. That's what I said. I mean, I, I don't know what more I can do on that.
I just wanna put it on record.
And I was very clear enough.
That Derek J. Reed is not a owner of Reed's Landscaping. I am vice president as a title.
But you're very vocal about it.
And I'll continue to be very vocal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take a motion to adjourn.
For a second, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Ready.
Hold on.
Bernie, you're gonna make that call, you're gonna file your pardon, please, just to cut that dead wire.
Seriously.
And I will.
Stephen, you remember, it's done that across.